Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 11th, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment of silence on this somber day of remembrance, 9/11. We must never forget, so I'll just ask for all to take a pause for about 15 seconds, please. Thank you. First, I'd like to take the time to acknowledge and congratulate Tony Genavise for earning, yet again, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the National Government Finance Officers Association. Year after year, our finance office and the Board of Finance earn this prestigious audit award. According to a letter from the GFOA, "The certificate is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting." Quote, "The high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate a town's financial story," end quote. We in Woodbridge are most fortunate to have Tony as our finance director and our administrative officer. I would like to let the Board know that I've appointed Hillary Drum to the town's ad hoc sustainability committee. Ms. Drum is a member of the Beecher Road School Green Team and has been critical to implementing the school's waste reduction, composting, and recycling efforts at the school's cafeteria. As I promised last month, I've continued to hold meetings with members of the Amity Woodbridge Historical Society and Coen Farms to discuss a path forward for all at the Darling House. I remain confident that we will find a solution that works for everyone. I believe we have another meeting next, not next week, but the week after. Since our last meeting, I attended the Woodbridge Volunteer Fire Association's annual picnic on August 17th. I stopped by the Dog Park fundraiser at Grimaldi's Pizza on National Dog Day, August 26th. On the 27th, I attended Amity High School convocation, and on the 28th, I attended the monthly SCROG meeting. On August 31st, I attended the Fourth Annual Shanti Rose Garden Celebration. There's a little bit about that further along in the program. On September 1st, I went to the Masaro Community Farms Dinner on the farm fundraiser, which was phenomenal, as always. Tony and I met with Amity Superintendent Jed Byers regarding the Amity referendum on December 1st, 4th, I'm sorry. I don't believe they've actually voted on that date, but that's what they're thinking about. They are seeking permission to install an all-weather field and replace air handlers, among other facilities projects. We hope to have a presentation to the Board of Selectmen for Amity in the near future, and we're aiming for our October meeting for that presentation from them. I've been in touch with Congresswoman Rosa DeLoro's office about our flooding problems in Lower Woodbridge to continue to identify federal funds for the Army Corps of Engineers. I will keep you informed as we seek to help these residents. I've worked with the senior center to preserve the mural. We photographed it and put it on canvas to preserve it for at least 100 years. It is now with the framers and will be hanging on the wall in the senior center, and the wall will be then painted. It looks very beautiful, and the senior center is talking about making smaller versions available for sale or as gifts. This is a short-term fix to their request to update the senior center. The Amity Facility Building Committee recently met, and Phase 1 of the project is now completed, except for a few minor finishing touches. On Tuesday, I attended the annual Coachman Square picnic at The Grove, and Dwight was there as well, with his wife. The picnic was free, and the senior center hosted a chair volleyball tournament to raise funds for the Alzheimer's Walk that they participate in every year. Their team is called Motrin in Motion.[253.37][253.37](Laughter). They did well, though. And this morning, I visited Crest Lincoln Mercury. They're about to break ground for $2 to $2.5 million renovation. This project will take about six months, and they will be open during construction. I'd like to remind you of a few upcoming dates. On September 25th, we're hosting the state's Freedom of Information Public Education Officer, Tom Hennick, who will give a workshop for board and commission members about the state's freedom of information laws. I would strongly suggest that you all attend. It's most important that we all make every effort to be compliant with this most important law. The Living Treasure Dinner is on October 2nd, and I'd like to remind people to buy their tickets for the event as soon as possible. It was a great dinner last year and a very worthy fundraiser for our senior center. Also, please save the date for the annual Veterans' Day ceremony on November 11th. Barry Josephs always does a lovely job of organizing this solemn ceremony. Additionally, I can now report that the Beecher Road School tennis courts have been primarily completed. Is that correct? Yes, okay. Later this evening, we will hear from Brian St. Pierre about his revised proposal for the former country club. I have received several positive inquiries and comments since our meeting in August, when I announced that I had a small group of staff look into plans for creating a park at the former country club. It is obvious to me that residents are excited about this possibility, and once the town has decided at referendum if we sell a portion of the land to be developed, we will do more work to get public input, cost, and other details for the creation of a new park. I am committed to the creation of this park regardless of the referendum outcome. No matter the result, this will be a multi-year project. And with that, I will invite, I would ask permission of the Board to schedule Katie Poole, who is here from Masaro Farm, because she, both she and John Gorham have to go to a meeting, I think in New Haven. So if it's okay with everyone, we could move number four to number two. And Bob said it was okay. He'd indulge us, we asked him, okay. So Katie, if you'd mind coming up and state your name, and thank you.
Good evening. Again, Katie Poole here from Masaro Community Farm. Thank you so much for having us. I think we're on the agenda this evening, just mainly to be here as a representative of our organization and make sure that we're giving regular updates, just so everyone can hear all the things that are happening on the farm. So, real briefly, you mentioned, this is our 10th season on the farm. We did just have our dinner on the farm, celebrating 10 growing seasons on the farm. We're very excited about that. That's definitely a milestone for a small startup such as us. We've had many highlights and improvements on the farm this year. If you haven't been there or don't get there regularly, it might look very different to you. We opened a, thanks to cooperation with Haynes Construction from Seymour, we opened a new approximately 20-space parking area, permeable parking area, and new walk entrance to the farm. So this is a safety and separates our farm vehicle traffic from pedestrian traffic, plus a lot more parking than the 13 spaces that we had before. So when we've got about 250 people coming through every week, that's a huge, huge improvement for us. This is also the biggest year that we've had, as far as farming is concerned, so we have 230 CSA subscribers. Those are folks who sign up to get their vegetables from the farm every week. That's the most we've ever had in 10 years, so we're excited about that. We have a lot of educational things happening on the farm, continuing to use our space for education of all ages. Our summer camp program actually grew to three weeks from two weeks for the first time this year, and we have a record number of volunteers coming to the farm. So those are just a very few select highlights that I wanted to mention today. Of course, we, you know, farming is not an exact science, and we know there are a number of challenges, and we definitely had those this year. We're certainly feeling climate change, weather, and just timing of weather definitely impacted our crops this year. So we are definitely seeing, we had hoped to have some regular farm stand hours, for which we had gotten a permit for earlier this spring, and have really had to scale that back, just because there really has not been that much produce, and we've been, as always, making our CSA customers our primary priority. But we continue to work with those challenges. We also tried some new methods for plastic-free growing, which didn't work out so well, so the farmer is still continuing to tweak those kind of approaches. And we had, definitely had some staffing challenges with some folks being out at a peak time of the year. So those things happen, and we try to work through them, but we are definitely seeing the impact on the crops, and now things that, the weather has eased up a bit, we're starting to see some things kind of return to where we would expect them to be. We know that Labor Day is behind us for everyone, and so that often mentally means we shut down our own backyard gardens and kind of get back to work and school, but we still have quite a bit of season ahead of us at the farm. We typically, with all the high tunnels that we have there, we do continue growing, if weather will allow, all the way up until Christmas. Sometimes it's through the end of November, but we continue as long as we possibly can, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that. There are also a number of educational offerings continuing to happen at the farm this fall for all ages, workshops for adults, several offerings for children. We're partnering, again, with Recreation Department and Beecher Road School to do an after-school program this fall, and to do a taste test at Beecher Road School using farm produce. We're also going to be offering some new things this fall, such as a parent and toddler program, and also a vacation day program that will run on the various days that the school is actually out of session. So hopefully, that will help some parents. There's definitely a demand for outdoor educational programming, so we're trying our best to respond to that. And we've continued with our food donation programs. We also launched in July a new add-on to our existing farm food donation program, which we typically have several partners throughout the reason, the season, sorry, and this year, we're working with Salvation Army in Ansonia, as well as the Woodbridge Human Services Department and Spooner House. But this year, we expanded that a little bit and also started working with St. Vincent de Paul and Derby, and these are areas that we particularly identify as being high need and have also partnered a food nutrition and education program with that food donation. So that is a grant-funded program, and we're excited, because those partnerships, particularly in the Valley community, where we see some very high needs with both individuals and families and children in the schools. So we're excited to be able to offer this and hope to report to you on that at some later meeting. In any case, it's nice, we're getting a lot of calls, a lot of inquiries, lots of field trips being scheduled, so we're happy that people are thinking of us not only as a place to expand, explore, and learn, and have fun, but also partnerships for, you know, reaching our community of need. So lots of things happening, and I'll be back here to tell you more in the future. So I know that was fast. I'm happy to take any questions. I wanted to try to keep it brief.
Anyone have any questions?
There's a lot going on. We do have a newsletter on our website, it's really the primary way, and we've been taking advantage of the Woodbridge Town News to get an article in there every issue, just to try to keep, you know, the town residents informed.
Thank you. Thanks for that wonderful dinner.
Have a nice night, everybody. Thank you for having me.
That was great, so good. Thank you. Okay, moving up, item two on the agenda now, Woodbridge Board of Education Superintendent Bob Gilbert, welcome.
Thank you. And I just wanted to just affirm that the farm is just a tremendous resource to the Beecher Road School kids and teachers, and there's been many who have taken advantage of that and will continue to do so, and I know everybody in town just really appreciates what goes on at Masaro, and I do especially as well. So thank you for all of that. So it's good to see all the Selectmen here this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to come to you again on this monthly basis, just to talk a little bit and to give some updates about Beecher Road School and what's going on. I'm happy to report that it has been a terrific start to the school year. As you may know, we said a sad farewell to our outgoing principal, Gina Prisco, who left for a position, a similar position in Trumbull. And as we said a tearful goodbye, we enthusiastically welcomed Lisa Sherman as the principal and Doreen Merrill as the assistant principal for the 2019-20 school year. I want to say that Lisa and Doreen have done an outstanding job of leading the faculty and staff in the opening of school. It's been a terrific start. I'd also like to just publicly recognize our office staff members and our custodial maintenance staff members, who have done their usual yeoman's work over the summer to make all the preparations to support teachers, but also to make sure the building is clean, maintained, and ready to go. Professional development for teachers took place on August 23rd, 26th, and 27th. On the very first day, we had a keynote speaker from outside the district, his very well-known speaker named Steve Sobel, you may have heard of him, and he gave just a really powerful opening address to the faculty and staff entitled "The Power and Passion of Extraordinary Educators and How They Can Impact Students." And I have to say, he was really met with really great enthusiasm, enthusiasm, many people saying that it was probably the most memorable keynote or opening that they've had, so we were really glad that we secured his services, and we might have him back at some point. Our students did start on Wednesday, August 28th. Our students are off and running, they've been out there for two weeks now, and it's like, school is always there all summer. That's what it feels like. We also had our traditional kindergarten transition activities. Some of you folks might remember back to those days when you had children in the school, that first bus ride where the parents were there as well, and the first day when the students come for the hour and visit with their parents, and the kindergartners, I think, are feeling very much at home as well. Going hand-in-hand with all of that that goes on in the beginning of the year, our PTO is really an extraordinary group of parents and family members who really do a lot for our school. They had and held their amazing Welcome Back Ice Cream Social on the first week of school, that's actually the second day of school. This year, it was at no charge to everybody, because they had such fabulous fundraising efforts last year. We had probably well over 1,000, maybe 1,500 people in the back of the school. It was just a tremendous evening, it was beautiful weather, and it was just a very wonderful time to reengage with people after the summer vacation time. It was sort of one of those New England pictures that you would like to have hang in your, of all the people there, and all the kids playing, and all the parents socializing. I also want to say that the PTO does a great job of also holding other events during the course of the year that really helped to bring our community together, things called the grade-level socials, where on Friday nights, all the first graders and parents can come, on another night, the second graders, and so on and so forth. It's just a wonderful annual event that really do bring us, as a school family, together. So all, it's really been an amazing start. I think the Board of Selectmen will be interested to know that in regards to enrollment, while we were anticipating probably around 870 students by our projections, we've really basically held steady since last year. So we have basically the same numbers, 838 students, which is really about where we ended up in June. So we haven't seen that bump that was projected now. We have had years where there's an influx of students during the year, so we don't know how that will play out, but we are basically holding steady since we left on the last day of the last school year. Most of our grade levels are within our class-size guidelines, as we have those set. There's a couple of grades that have more above, grades two and six have some classes that are above that, and a few others here and there, but overall, it's looking pretty good. And September can be a fluid month. October 1st is really our official count, that the state has all school districts make that count. From the Board of Education standpoint, it's pleasant to let you know, and it's pleasant to work with a virtually new Board of Education. We have had five new members really onboard since July 1st. Our full board was available and all engaged and participated in our retreat in August. We had a consultant come in from CAE to help us to establish all the roles and responsibilities. The Board discussed Board goals, which they'll act upon on Monday's, at Monday's meeting, and our subcommittees have been established and have started to do their work. I want to say that I have appreciated the invite and the participation in the town's recent Budget Task Force model. Both Steve Fleishman, our Board Chair, Al Poole, our Business Manager, and myself have had an opportunity to meet with the town Budget Task Force, and we are actually embarking on a similar process, a similar model, similar model at our level, at our school level, for us to take a closer look at all the different areas, as we are really extra prudent with our budget as we construct it this year. From the facility standpoint, I would like to let you know that the beginning of this year, from a facilities and comfort standpoint, was a whole lot different than last year. Last year, as you might remember, we won't, I guess we won't go there, but this year, the results and the fruits of the labor that, from the Phase 1 HVAC work that has been done, and that you folks have been very supportive of last year, really paid off. Our company, our vendor is still doing some trending data and completing that, but I will tell you that, both from a numerical standpoint, the numbers, as well as the just the sheer, how does it feel when you ask a staff member, especially in the areas that we've completed the work, it is a big difference. So we're anticipating that that data will be completed soon, and that we're looking to just do the check of that data and then decide, not our head, yes, it looks like Phase 2 makes sense, because Phase 1 did pay off. So we hope to have that done this fall, as we move forward. Also, from a facility standpoint, as you know, a security consultant was engaged by the first Selectmen's Office to help all of us as town departments, as well, including Beecher, obviously, to coordinate for emergencies and to increase the effectiveness. So we have started to meet with that consultant, and we've had a couple meetings so far, and we'll continue to do that and keep you posted along the way, as to what that means for us and any changes. Just a couple more things. You might remember, last year, you had a very, very special invitation to come and take a tour of Beecher Road School, to see what it looks like right now. We talk a lot about, you know, we need this paved, or those floors taken care of, or this roof, or this, or that. And I know there are new members on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, so we are going to, and I'll coordinate this with Tony, we really would like to try to do, again, another effort to take a walk around the building and inside the building, as we start to prepare our capital budget to present to you in the fall. So more information will be forthcoming about that. From a financial standpoint, from the, our finance Subcommittee, we actually haven't not had a meeting yet, we'll be having one on Monday. I do want to reflect back to last year and say thank you very much, again, for your support of the extra appropriation that helped us with unanticipated expenses, both in the facility area, as well as unanticipated student needs. As we're preparing for our first finance meeting on Monday, I want to let you know with a smile that we do not currently have any kind of a special deficit or anticipated. Obviously, we continue to monitor that, we will continue to report on this area, and it's a variable and sometimes volatile area, but at this point, it's all good news. We also, last year, I just want to mention that we had, as you heard through various communications, we had an ad hoc sustainability committee that was endorsed by the Board of Ed, that ad hoc committee has completed their work, but it really has morphed into what we call the Green Team, which is part of the Green Leaf Program in Connecticut, and through the efforts of administration, parents, and teachers, and hopefully eventually students as leaders, we've actually started a full composting and recycling model in the cafeteria. So it's quite exciting, and the kids have latched on to it, and so we're very, very pleased about how that has played out. We also had three open houses, actually, the third one is tonight, so I leave you here, I'll be going back to the school for our third open house of the year, where we've been actually showing the parents how the recycling thing works as well. Finally, you may have heard through the news that the Smarter Balance Testing Results, this is the annual assessment that the Connecticut State Department of Education administers to all students in grades three through eight. Those results have been released to, not only in schools, but also to the public. We have not had an opportunity to do a full, complete analysis of that yet, but I will say that, as we've looked at the results from a high level, we're very pleased this year to see very, very positive results and very notable student growth. So we'll talk to you more about that as time goes on. That concludes my report, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, I will bring greetings from the Board of Selectmen to all the parents. How's that?
Yay, thank you very much. That's great. Item three on our agenda is liaison reports. Let's start with Sandy.
On Monday, this past Monday, September 9th, I attended the Library Commission meeting, and they welcomed Jim Moriarty, who is a new member of the Commission, and they elected their officers. Jeanette Glickman will continue as the Chair of the Commission. The Vice Chair is Renee Bowyer, and the Secretary is Tom Sharnow. They wanted to check about the liaison from the Board of Finance, and my understanding is that they are going to finalize their liaisons next week. Okay. All right, they did hire two new pages from the high school. Their new HVAC unit is working, and it has cut the humidity down to about 60%, which is wonderful from their perspective. Again, from a long-term view, it needs to get down to about 50%, and there were always two phases to this project. So the second phase, though, will still cost well over $100,000, so this will be at some time in the future that they will make a capital budget request for this. There is a new button panel in the elevator, which is working really, really well. I guess they have had problems with that in the past, so they're happy with that. They will also begin to have automatic renewals of all library material. Right now, you're notified when you have a renewal that is coming up, but you have to take some action. The system that they have now will allow those to be automatic renewals for, actually, two times, and we've asked Eric to gather some data, because that means that something could be out for nine weeks, which is a really long time. So they will get some data presented to determine whether they just want it to be automatic renewal one time, and then you have to request it the second time, or not. The other change is that there will no, the Library Commission will no longer be doing a performance evaluation of the director. This doesn't happen in any other department. All of those evaluations are done by their supervisor, which is Tony. So the Commission moved to have the library move into that same model. It doesn't mean that there won't be goals set, and that the Commission reviews the goals, but that the actual performance evaluation will be done by Tony. And then we did have another meeting of our Budget Review Task Force, actually, yesterday. And I have to say, I think it is a great collaboration between the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, in terms of getting the department heads to come in and really talk to us, and for us to share some ideas that we have, in terms of how to look at how to provide services differently. And as Dr. Gilbert mentioned, we actually did meet with the Board of Education twice, actually, and Steve Fleishman, the Chair, came at the second meeting. We've met with the Police Department, Public Works, the Library, and the Fire Department. We will still be meeting with Recreation, Human Services, and the Town Clerk. And again, it's all to really explore ways for us to be more efficient, in terms of how services are provided, how to consolidate, like, programs, and be able to move forward with some initiatives that really go across the departments, not just within one department. So when we have all of our ideas vetted, we will make a report to the Board of Selectmen, but our goal is to really work with the department heads and the Commissions, in terms of exploring these ideas. We are not making changes to their budgets. We want to present new ideas and bring them along, in terms of how to think about things differently. And Tony's been a great asset to that group, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission met on Tuesday, September 3rd. The initial action was the election of a new chairman, and that was former State Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection, Robert Cleat. I think the town is very fortunate to have such an individual as Chairman of that particular commission. Kathleen Wallace was elected as Secretary, and Yanni Zamir was elected as the West Rock Ridge State Park Council Representative.
That's a mouthful.
Yep.
West Rock.
There was approval of a change of use for the Tia Russell Dance Studio, and it was a change from a door care and training facility to a dance studio.
Are they moving, Joe? Did they get a new location?
No.
Did they go from where they were to?
Yes.
Someone told me, or you guys told me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, they're no longer, I guess, on Selden Street now, they've moved to? Right, Clay Date, the old Clay Date on Litchfield, I guess, right? So that's helpful, bigger location. That's good, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
They continue to work on the finalization of the zoning regulations, and they're also working on an update of the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. Also, I attended the Police Commission meeting, held last night. There is an opening for dispatcher. Steve Faust Signo was elected Vice Chair of the Commission. Andy Esposito is the new appointee. The Chief also mentioned that they have a tentative union agreement, which will be announced later on in the year, and there were a couple of concerns about traffic from residents on Johnson Road and Baldwin Road. There was also an expression of appreciation to Mac Gilbreth, who served 11 years and will be missed.
Wow.
And of course, it was welcomed to new member, Andy Esposito.
Thank you. Mika?
The Recreation Commission met, hasn't met since our last meeting. I did, I was at the Economic Development Commission meeting on the 28th. They did, one of the first orders of business was to elect new- They did, one of the first orders of business was to elect new officers. Jeremy Rosner was elected as President, Toby Nuwango was Vice President, and Mike Holland was elected as Secretary. Much of the meeting was an introduction to the four new members of the Economic Development Commission. Debbie Brander, Cleo Nicolakis, Toby Nuwango, and there was a fourth is?
Sean Flynn.
Thank you very much, Sean Flynn, who's there, thank you very much, and Sean Flynn. So we spent a good part of the meeting just reviewing the different programs, different activities that have been going on, and another large portion of the meeting was spent on identifying how to move forward, and they are, the EDC is prioritizing at this point in time to define exactly what activities they are going to engage in over the near term, they'll identify a few of those, and their intent is also still to deliver on their assessment of the CERC report that was done, once they've completely vetted that. So that's hopeful that we'll get that on the agenda in sometime in the near future. So the, I'll just expound and just add a comment in terms of the budget commission. We certainly welcome, Susan Jacobs from Finance, from the Finance, Board of Finance, did join one of our meetings, and we certainly welcome the input and the presence, if you're so inclined, of the other members of our board. But it's, what, so far what it's been is it's, really seems to be a refocus as to how the departments and commissions are approaching the budget process. And I think that we're hopeful that that will obviously bear some fruit in terms of some savings or things, but right now, that's the direction that we're going in.
Do you have the schedule?
They're announced.
We haven't seen it yet, I don't know, do you have?
It's all posted publicly.
It's posted, yeah. The internet, parents send us out, it's public.
It's consistently posted, yes.
Yes.
And it's generally on to?
It's all public and way.
No, I understand, I just, you know.
Yeah.
But yeah, by all means.
I normally don't surf the CERC website that much, so.
So, yeah, we'll let you know, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dwight?
Not able to attend Human Services, because their meeting was supposed to be held on the 2nd, it was held on the 9th, and there was a conflict with Amity, the Amity meeting, Board of Ed. So, but the, but as Beth mentioned before, the dinner is being held on October 2nd, and that is a huge event for them, so. I went to the Amity Board of Ed on Monday night, and the main focus was the, on the budget, was the referendum that they're, that they're planning to do. What I did was I made copies of the packet that I received, and I just wanted to pass these out, so. Pass these two down. Jerry, you want to hand these down? Thank you. It's going to be, it's going to, the Board voted to proceed with question one, which was more of a mechanical issue. This is to replace eight air handling units that were installed in 1993, are operating not, you know, they're, okay, they're not efficient, they're having main items. They're also, they also want to refurbish the, the chillers at Amity Regional. There's a, there's an asphalt replacement at the parking lot at the high school, and there's also improvements in the gym and the cafeteria at each middle school. And that's, and with the estimated cost right now, the total cost for that is going to be three, roughly $3.2 million. Okay, the Board voted unanimously to accept that question, to bring it forward. The second question, question two, and you'll see, and I detached a lot of information about the field and that, but what they want to do is they want to replace the track, the lighting, scoreboard, and they want to install an all-weather field at the stadium field at Amity, which means the grass field is gone, they want to replace the track, the track, they say, is in really poor shape. The grass field needs a lot of maintenance after, after play and everything, and they also want to replace ADA walkway bleachers, scoreboard, and field free, because right now, trying to get there is very hard, they don't have really good seating there, and whatever, so. And that question, the total cost for that question is a little over $3.5 million. So right now, they're, the estimate that they're looking to bond is $6.732 million. So their dates are, they voted on it last night, they will be coming to the Board of Selectmen at each town, at each of the three towns, they said sometime in the next two weeks to four weeks, or probably early October. They, they will take action on October 21st to establish a date for a hearing, public hearing. They're planning to hold the public hearing on November the 4th, and they're planning to go to referendum on 12/4. They say that if everything goes, if this is approved and everything is okay, then they can start work immediately once school ends, and it could be up and, and it could be completed by, by the end of the summer. So when school comes back in, it'll be ready to be used. So I just, I gave you a lot of information on, you know, on that, so I just wanted to share it with you in advance. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
Yep.
That's great. Joe?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okeydoke. Next on our agenda is Dr. Prasad. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, maybe tell us your, the members of your family that have joined you this evening.
My name is Anshivah Bhurathan, my name is Prasad.
Thank you.
My letter of thanks, which is in front of you, or is going to be in front of you very soon, is addressed to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration via honorable First Selectman, Ms. Beth Heller. But since all of you are here, and I am here, so directly I can talk to you. I feel very happy today to express my deeply heartfelt sincere thanks and gratitude to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration. For, one, continuing the beautiful community garden project on Fifth General property, which started a long time ago before I moved to the town, maintaining the walking tracks, exercise areas, and rest facilities. Three, maintaining the dirt roads and sidewalks around them for the gardeners to reach to their plots. Four, allowing the gardeners to plant vegetables and flowers in a variety of ways of their choice within the general guidelines prescribed of the town. Five, providing the basic assistance to the gardeners. And more importantly, for, one, granting me the permission to convert my vegetable garden into rose garden. Two, declaring this rose garden open to public. Three, allowing me to put up granite branches and a table at appropriate places for the convenience of the public. Four, accepting my donation and opening a Shanti Rose Garden account. Five, allowing me to transfer my life insurance benefit with the face value of $50,000 in Shanti Rose Garden account, in addition to the initial amount needed to open the account. This agent process, and it will be completed soon, I have asked the insurance company to send me a form where I can change the beneficiary, and I will change it irrevocably to the town of Goodbridge, or whatever name is suggested by you. And it will be done very soon. Six, for agreeing to take over the responsibility to maintain the Shanti Rose Garden after my death, as long as costs and funded, are funded and the community gardens still exist. And seven, allowing me to maintain the Shanti Rose Garden during my life. In the end, I must mention that I feel very proud to be a resident of our town that provides best school system, best natural environment, best rural living, and above all, the best community feelings amongst groups and individuals. In spite of our differences of opinions, different cultures, and different national origins, we live happily together. That's my letter of thanks. Initially, I had asked for five minutes, but if you give me a couple of more minutes, I have more emotional feelings coming out, and I can mention that to you.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll two minutes, because we have a huge agenda tonight.
Only two minutes.
Thank you.
Today is the great day for me. I feel very happy and proud to mention that in 19, in 2014, God gave me an idea and opportunity to create a rose garden. Not only God gave me an idea and opportunity, but step by step, it provided health, support, and strength to fulfill that. And today, I feel very proud that with the help of the Board, with the help of the administration, with the help of the community, all the members present here and not present here, the project has been almost completed, and efforts have been made for a reasonably long life for the garden, for the benefit of the town. I feel really, really, really very happy, because I can, I could do something for the community in which I live, and it is the most important thing a person can do in his life. And also, I must mention that every year, we have been holding a Shanti Rose Garden anniversary party. This year, we held, but I apologize to most of you, because there was a very short notice, and it was held during the Labor Day weekend, so many of you did not find it convenient to attend. I really apologize for that, and next year, I'll take care of that, and I'll give you long notice, so that all of you can come and attend the meeting. That's all I want to say right now, thank you very much, it's really, really, very great day for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Prasad. Anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I see Ted is here, and you probably have a million things to do, so if Tony would indulge us?
Sure.
We could move Ted up for the annual tree, it's, we're jumping all over the place, and I apologize. Number nine, Boy Scout Holiday Tree Sale and Request for Oversized Signs, Ted Pockwood, Scout Master. So I believe you have in your packet a map that Ted put together. Initially, we were thinking, because of the construction at the old firehouse, we might have to move Ted and his gang, but you've come up with a way to work it out, so thank you for that, and if you'd like to explain to the Board quickly, and, good.
Yep, so Troupe 63 has been doing our tree sales now since about 1964, the first year, we didn't do it, second year we did. Originally, it started out down at the Blue Check property, and then moved up to its current site at the firehouse many, many years ago. We appreciate that the town allows us to use that, this is our largest fundraiser, it supports our troupe. We currently have 30 boys that are participating in our troupe, so our numbers have grown quite a bit the last couple of years. Since we were here last year, we have had two boys that finished their Eagle Scout, and we have 10 boys that are in the process of working on their Eagle Scout rank, they're working on their last level. We have a couple of projects that are getting ready to start here in town, and a couple of boys that live out of town that are going to be supporting projects in neighboring communities of Orange and in Hamden. But the funding that we get from the tree sales allows us to send the boys on camping trips, supplement their camp week up at Saquonson, and allows us to help fund some of the projects that the boys do. We donate money to some of their Eagle projects to help get them through, to put them over the edge. So we really appreciate allowing us to use the area, allowing us to put the signs around town that are oversized for approximately seven weeks while we do our tree sales. And we've worked out to try and avoid any conflicts this year. We'll move our parking, normally we park in the old firehouse parking lot. This year, we'll direct everybody into the library parking lot. Our members that are working the tree sales that day will park across the street at the old fire, or the new firehouse parking lot, it's three or four members will park down away from the edge, so we're not in interference with any of the firemen coming in for fire calls. And we're going to make sure that we keep everybody well clear of the storage trailers and the building itself that are under construction. So hopefully, it works out for everybody to keep it where it is. And we have a lot of returning customers that come in and know that that's where they come to get their trees, and would be rather surprised if we moved. We'd end up incurring some extra cost to ensure that people knew where we had moved to. So we appreciate it if you find it, that we're able to continue there and put out our signs.
Does anyone have any questions of Ted? Someone like to entertain a motion to approve, okay, approve the Boy Scout Holiday Tree Sale and Request for Oversized Signs, as discussed? Dwight moves, I'll second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Tony might have to leave a little bit early, so we decided to move him up, so we will go back to, jumping again. Item six, Administrative Officers, Director of Financial Report.
I have the financial report, it's our preliminary year-end report for 2019. We have our auditors have been in, we're in for field review a few weeks ago, and we'll be back in for their final review the, in a week and a half. So this is a final year-end report for your review. Once we complete the audit, the audit will be presented probably in, try to present it in January, in a combined budget meeting, so that both boards can hear the presentation. So I'd like to, it really helps to look at the summary of accounts, which is the third page, and it identifies the final budget for each department, the actual, and then the variance for the year. So the total cash variance, what says, it gives you a total revenue variance of $462,000. The surplus, a expenditure surplus of $486,000, which leaves in excess of revenues over expenditures of $949,000, but we designate $400,000 of designation from fund balance, so you can see the actual increase into our fund balance due to surplus is $559,000. Sort of lays it out on that schedule for you, so you can follow each of the departments in the revenues and expenditures. So I want to go through some of the highlights of that. And so on our revenue side, we had a few highlights that are worth noting. The first is interest income, which was a surplus at the end of the year of $185,000. Intergovernmental revenues, we've discussed many times, the prime, is a surplus of $240,000, mainly due to three items. $75,000 in additional stabilization funds that were not, information was not available at the time of the budget passing. The $66,000 in increased ECS funds, again, due to the timing of the budget process at the state, we did not have that information. And finally, $90,000 in special education excess cost funds. Now, as you know, that is a, essentially, funds for special education costs, which are in the Board of Education budget. So that's a grant reimbursement for funds, expenditures that are in the Board of Ed budget, so is it, that's sort of the?
So this is not used in their deficit?
Well, it sort of all goes to the same place. So they, we funded their deficit, but this comes back to the town.
Right, this comes back to the town, not to future.
Correct.
Right. Right. So it is essentially used to fund that.
To fund, that's right.
Okay.
Right, that's correct. And that's the surplus. We had originally budgeted, I think, $40,000.
Right.
So the total is 30.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And department charges, we have a deficit of $115,000. We had lower than anticipated revenue in a few departments, including town clerk fees, recreation fees, transfer station fees, and country, the biggest item was the Country Club pool fees when that was closed earlier in the year. And finally, the town received an Amity surplus, as you all are aware, and we had a remaining of the surplus of $125,000. That's the, those are the primary items on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we had a few, I tried to highlight departments that were over a certain value, and so the Board of Selectmen had a surplus due to savings and legal fees for outside counsel, and that was about $25,000. The Board of Finance, the Finance Department, rather, we eliminated a payroll position, and that was a surplus of $33,000. The Board of Finance had a surplus of $40,000 mainly due to contingency balance of $37,000 at the end of the year. The Police Department had a vacant, a surplus of about $37,000. That's mainly due to a vacant position and the offset of salary surplus versus overtime. That's a lot of what that is. The Fire Department had a surplus of $35,000. They had surpluses in a few supply accounts, shooting gear replacement, medical expenses, and supplies. Both Human Services and Recreation, both had surpluses in their part-time wage accounts, and so that's reflective of programming and some of the surpluses that they have in some of the wages of that programming. In Recreation, there was an issue with the pool, if you remember, being closed for a while, so that's why the Recreation had some surpluses, significant surplus in their seasonal wages because of the closure of the pool. The outdoor pool had a surplus, while there was a deficit in the revenue, there was a surplus in expenses of $44,000. The Library had a surplus of $59,000 mainly due to elimination of a bookkeeper position, and another position was created, was eliminated, and put into a part-time position. So the Library had made several personnel moves to try to be more efficient and save money, and so that's the result of that, which they passed forward onto their budget for the current year. And finally, the Woodbridge Board of Education returned $32,000 for the fiscal year. So we transferred 290, I think it was, and we, they returned 32,000. So those are the highlights for the year.
Anyone have any questions on that for Tony? Okay, moving on to B, tax refunds.
I'm sorry. Just a few questions.
Oops.
Any of the surplus goes into the...
Fund balance, general fund balance. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Goes into the fund balance.
Correct. So the fund balance at the end of the year is $6.5 million, about 13 percent. $558,000.
No, how much is the surplus? Well, I guess I have, we got 981, basically 982 from Amity, right?
Correct.
And we have 126, let's call it, left.
Left, right.
So that's about 850 that was used.
Correct.
Where was that? How was that used?
How was it used?
It's right here, the 220, the 289, 389, does that add up?
That's it, that all adds up to 981, right?
So the cat, so how does the 220 and the 239, what was the impact of that in our surplus for the operational budget?
If you did not use those funds for capital projects, it would have just increased the amount of money returned to fund balance. Is that what you're asking me?
I don't think so. We used 220 to reduce the FY '20 budget.
Right.
So 220 went into the...
Into the budget, right, as a revenue line to reduce the overall amount to where you had to raise in tax dollars.
Right.
Which we did the previous year, that was sort of the same.
So doesn't that add to the surplus, doesn't that help create a surplus? Am I looking at that wrong?
Yeah, it's using the funds in the 2019s for the following year's budget. So you don't have those funds available to go in the fund balance because they're reserved for a future budget.
Okay. All right. And what was the cap, I forget, what was the capital that we used for the...
There was 389, 417, there was a variety of items.
There was a whole bunch of...
Correct.
Okay.
And then 239 to fund the deficit at the school.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Joe?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay, thanks. Item B, tax refunds. We have a memo from our tax collector in your packet. There are no personal property refunds, nor real estate refunds. There are motor vehicle refunds in the amount of $7,824.72. I will motion that we approve that. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And funding requests. We can, want to keep going, or you want to, should we do? Keep going, all right? It's your time.
All right.
Okay. We have a, first, I guess there's no funding request, you have line item transfer, is that different?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, in your packet, you have a line item transfer number 1920-02 in the amount of $14,204. And Tony, you maybe want to take this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
So these are, both of these are related to the presentation we had on, was it July? Did you have that?
Yeah, it wasn't last month, it was...
June.
Was it June?
So you were on the Board of Finance when we had the presentation, right.
Yeah, okay.
So we had a presentation from Sean DeRosa from Amity about our upgrade to our switching and cabling, and so the first is to upgrade the fiber optic cabling and switches to connect the Police Department and the Fire Department. This will enable the town to locate our servers at the Fire Department server room, which was the main goal of that project. And then the second one is, well, that's the first one.
First one's, the main's coming from where?
So there's a, there was a radio project that we had funds remaining in that we, was no longer necessary due to the upgrade that we did. That's the first one.
Okay.
The, it might be helpful if I discuss the second one and its context.
Okay, it's fine, if they're related, sure.
The second one is to, the Fire Department had requested just about $40,000 in their capital budget to replace their servers, which was, which are at the end of their useful life, I think at least five years old, and are in need of replacement. So that was not funded during the budget process, and our goal was to combine their servers with the town's servers and locate them all in the Fire Department. So as a result, there's a request of $18,000, which is basically a little over $20,000 less to basically combine our servers into one server location.
Right. Coming from the same place?
Same place, yeah.
So where does this money come?
There's a, there was a...
Machinery radio.
There was a, there was a money that was funded to upgrade the tower site at the one on Litchfield Turnpike, which was approved a while ago, but because of the radio project, it's not necessary. Right.
Until we have coverage, so we didn't...
Right.
That's great.
Is that reading?
And originally hadn't used it because I wasn't sure if the, how the project was going to do, but because a project's, has come in and it's under budget, I didn't think it was necessary to use it for the project, if that was what we were going to use that for, if it was necessary.
That's great that we have money for this.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve line item transfer number 1920-02 in the amount of $14,204.
Second. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Take it, Mika. Next one.
I will make a motion that we approve line item transfer number 1920-03 in the amount of $18,000, $18,280.
Joe seconds, thank you. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. And last, under, unless you have another, item D?
No, that's it.
Natural gas purchasing cooperative.
Isn't there one more line item transfer?
Two, three, one?
That should be it.
I only have two.
That's it.
Oh, that's a few minutes. Okay, that's from before.
From last month, right.
Sorry.
Okay. Natural gas purchasing cooperative.
We are looking to go out to bid for natural gas for our buildings. We combined with the Board of Education, and other entities have joined us in the past, and this is just permission to move forward with that. The pricing is daily, so we can't, it's like fuel, we can't actually come back and request it, and then the pricing will expire, so...
Who's in the cooperative?
Well, currently, right now, it's the town and the Board of Education, for Woodbridge Board of Education. We've extended invitation to Amity, the Orange Board of Education, Town of Orange, and others that use gas. We're not quite sure, sometimes some of them join, some of them don't, depending on their particular needs.
Okay.
So we'll get the best cooperative...
As long as we've reached out to them, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So who authorized it?
Typically, it's the first selectman to...
To lock in whenever, so you don't have to...
Right, right. Otherwise, by the time you have a meeting...
Well, that's right.
It'll be gone, yeah, the prices change. Right, exactly.
I saw moved that we give the authority to the first selectman to enter into these types of negotiations.
Okay. Any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, it's now 6:03. Thanks, Tony.
Okay.
Public comment, please come up and state your name and address, and because we have a lot of folks here tonight, and we have a busy agenda, I would respectfully request that you use your two minutes wisely, please. Thank you.
Honestly, I thought, I'm tired, I'm never doing this again. And then three things happened that made me think, okay, I'm going to give it one more try. I started walking at the Fitzgerald property, it's beautiful, the lawns mowed, well taken care of, although truthfully, I think somebody should do something about how you enter because it's being used a lot, and it's kind of dangerous with the big cars going in and out. Sorry, I'm not here to tell Dr. Prasad I do enjoy his rose garden. That was one, that's where I'm walking now. Two, I paid my tax bill. And three, I saw a flyer for the Woodbridge Day Road Race, and I remember turning to my husband 38 years ago and saying, I'm going to have to write a check to the town because Russ Satter gave us $1,000 as seed money for the first Woodbridge Day and the first Woodbridge Day Road Race. And it's not that he really supported it, it's that he thought he'd give it a try, and he did. And he went to Williams that day, and I think Joe Crisco started the race for us. So I'm here once again to say to you, we own the property at the Country Club of Woodbridge. If it's been mowed once, it must have been mowed months ago. The gardens are, you can't even find them. The trees and the shrubs, the beautiful flowering trees and shrubs are covered with bittersweet and all the weeds you can imagine. Whether or not the referendum goes through, we're still going to own 95 acres, which means we still have to have a plan. This is my third Board of Selectmen, this must be my 10th time here. I think that, at least, I'm sure, but I really believe that one of these boards has to take it upon themselves to say, we need to do something. How many of you have walked the property? How many of you have really seen what it really looks like now? It's a disgrace, it's a disgrace that a town like this has let this property go to hell in a handbasket. And I truly believe that if it had been taken care of, like I had been begging the two previous boards to do, we might have had more offers on it, we might have gotten more money on it. And now, it's, honestly, I believe it's a disgrace, and it's a shame, because the property is so beautiful. And now, as we come into fall, probably one of the prettiest sites in the town of Woodbridge is up on the sixth hole or the 14th hole. And maybe someone could have been creative and mowed a part of the club so that it could be used for walking. There are days that the Fitzgerald property is really crowded. Labor Day, there were no parking places. So there is a need for more walking trails in town. I don't know what else to say. As I said, I thought I'd never come back and do this, and then I said, I'm going to give it one more try. I urge you, no matter what happens with the referendum, to put aside money to properly take care of this. I'm not asking you to mow it like the Fitzgerald property, I'm asking you to do better care than you've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Chequiden from For Woodfield Road. I have a question for you. Did anyone authorize that rose garden and the construction of the granite structure?
I, not when I was first selectman, but I believe when, maybe, I don't know how many, maybe 2014, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, it was authorized by the then Board of Selectmen.
Before it started?
Yes, before I started.
No, no, before it started.
Before he started? Yes, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Martha German, 1170 Johnson Road. Yesterday, when I looked at the agenda for this meeting, I was surprised to see that Mr. Brian St. Pierre has a new partner. It's his third. And when I looked up this new partner, Max Wernert, I saw some beautiful commercial buildings, very handsome individual homes, but what I didn't see were any condos or any sort of cluster housing. This pairing of developers seems to be an example of the blind leading the blind. In light of Mr. St. Pierre's inexperience and financial difficulties, it is foolish to proceed with a partner who is inexperienced in this type of building also. It is currently not in the best interests of our town. I strongly recommend putting a moratorium on any sales of the property or any type of development at the Country Club of Woodbridge. We need time to rethink the best use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody wanted to be here this evening who could not, and that was Tom Wheel, who lives on Woodfield Road. I offered to read Tom's comments and have given them to Jerry to be put on record. As has been argued ad nauseam, any plan to develop a substantial portion of the largest undeveloped tract in Woodbridge is, for numerous reasons, a bad idea. But the real kicker is that the idea is being sold based upon assumptions regarding the benefits of development that, unless carefully measure, unless careful measures are taken to assure the realizations of those assumptions, are likely to result in a loss of an extraordinary and unique asset without getting the benefits being put forward to justify the loss of the land. First and foremost, the developer would have us believe that Woodbridge can expect to get, in exchange for the loss of 50 to 60 acre track, the track, tax revenues from the construction of 120 homes to be sold at about $400,000... the construction of 120 homes to be sold at about $400,000, or at a tax base of approximately $48 million. But once the tract is gone, unless protective covenants are added to the track, it is gone. And any inability of the developer to deliver on his project will mean a commensurate loss of the projected tax revenue. We had this discussion before when I shared that with Fieldstone Village, again dangling that carrot about what kind of taxes were gonna come in, it took 11 years to finally get the property built. Back to Mr. Wiles' comments. And any failure to ensure that the promised benefits will actually be delivered will constitute a fraud upon the people of Woodbridge, the people and the town. The people should not be asked to assume the risk of getting a dead pig in the poke in exchange for losing a major portion of the unique asset that is the Country Club of Woodbridge. The developer must bear that risk. The people should also not be held hostage to an uncertain timeline for the construction of those homes. Part of the price to be paid by the developer for that track must be a guarantee of the projected tax revenues from the $48 million base to be paid in full annually, beginning at the time that the contract is signed. And that guarantee must be from the credit worth, from a creditworthy party, underlined. If the developer isn't creditworthy, a letter of credit from a reliable bank would do. If they approve the sale, the people will be relying on a proposal put forward by Brian St. Pierre or a legal entity in which he has an interest in per en counterparty. The plan to be approved, A, must be specific enough to fully reveal all pertinent details of the development proposal for which approval is being sought, and B, must be strictly followed by the developer as the plan is being implemented. The developer must provide sufficiently detailed unit plans, property plots, and construction timetables that the townspeople are fully informed of the development plans and schedule, and St. Pierre, the counterparty, should be bound to execute the development in accordance with such plans. Neither St. Pierre nor the counterparty can be permitted to assign this agreement or to transfer the track or any accompanying permits or approvals to some third party whose involvement in this transaction has not been approved by the people. Any assignment of the agreement or any transfer of a portion of the track, other than a sale to an individual dwelling to a bona fide individual purchaser intending to inhabit such dwelling, or any sale or transfer of any interest, or any change of control in the counterparty that does not receive the approval of the people by referendum, in which any such assignment, sale, transfer, or change is described in detail, should invalidate the agreement, and as well as invalidating all permits issued in conjunction therewith. Other protective terms may be appropriate as well. There was a little add-on to that. We should demand, we being the residents, that the approval be predicated upon the town being precluded from incurring any additional expenses as a result of the development, so that the golden tax revenue egg, which is being held out as an inducement, would not be diluted by having to spend more town money. I had an opportunity to take a look at the draft of some suggestions that were made by whomever, I guess, board members or an ad hoc committee, as to what else could be done with the property, from bocce courts and picnic areas and a covered pavilion, parking, hiking, it goes on. And getting back to what Phyllis said, if you can't take care of this treasure you have now, why should any residents feel that there would be sufficient funding and desire to take care of this property going forward? Whether it's 90 acres left for us, 10 acres left for us, it doesn't make a difference. Nothing has been followed through. And I think the reason it was brought up, and I will cut this short, is because in the past, several of us have sat here and said, "You know what, guys? You don't have a complete plan for this property, it's piecemeal." And this is a very weak attempt to try to have a complete plan in per en for this property. I'm gonna give this to Jerry. Again, it's from Tom Wheel, he's on his way to England right now, and I thank him for this. It'll be a good time. Thank you.
Good evening. Alexia Belperon, 478 Main Street, Portland. I'm here again as the president of the Historical Society and the Public Comment Forum, because we've asked since April unsuccessfully to be put on your agenda. I want to share with you that the Historical Society has been awarded a Good to Great Grant by the state with a total project budget in excess of $64,000. The society applied for the substantial renovation funds to expand our ability to host public events at the house, including kitchen facilities, an ADA-approved bathroom, and a fire suppression system that will further protect the Darling House and our collections. This should be fantastic news, but unfortunately, we're not sure we can accept the grant. After the June meeting, we decided to extend the substantial time and effort to write this grant with the good faith assumption that the town would work with us to resolve the problems we raised last spring. Sadly, that has not happened. And in fact, last week, we learned from the first selectman and the town attorney of their goal to allow Mr. Snyder to live in the caretaker apartment, not just till December 31st, but indefinitely, thereby permanently revoking our control over the caretaker apartment and our ability to have an onsite caretaker. The state considered our successful operating system, which has been in place for decades, that includes our managerial authority over the property and an onsite caretaker, as outlined in our long-term agreement with the town when they decided to fund the grant. They assumed that successful operating system was still in place, but in fact, it has been suspended by the town. After nearly six months of turmoil, without progress, I'm here to tell you we are running out of time. We need to be on your October agenda so that we can have final decisions and an agreement that satisfies both the state's requirement for the grant and our requirements to continue running a museum. If that does not happen, sadly, we will have to return the funds to the state, and the future of the museum itself is in jeopardy. In the hopes that we can come to an understanding for all of our best interests, we look forward to sharing with you the specifics of the grant and working with appropriate town officials to obtain the necessary permits and permissions required to complete the project. We look forward to seeing you in October, but we also welcome your questions individually or as a group at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Lowber, 35 Wepawa Road. Nice to be here again. I had two things I wanted to talk about. One is a follow-up to Mr. Wiles' comments, and they have to do with the devil that we know versus devil that we don't know. The devil that we know, of course, is the country club in the present state. The devil that we don't know is going forward what will happen when we sell it. Now, if we sell it for development and the economy has a downturn, if there's a recession, if the market has not been adequately factored, if those houses don't sell, there's always a possibility that the builder will have to file for Chapter 11. And if those factors don't change, which they very well won't, he may have to file for Chapter 7. Now, I'm not wishing this on him at all, but we have to think about what would happen in that event. We would have no control over that property because we no longer own it. If he files for Chapter 7, then a court will adjudicate what happens to that asset, and it will most likely be liquidated to cover debt. If it's liquidated, it will go to the highest possible bidder to be used for whatever purposes they deem. It will no longer be under our contract. We all know that we have a woeful lack of affordable housing in this town, and it would, could very well be that that tract would be completed with affordable housing, which would increase the number of children in school and cause us to have more expenses, which we are trying to avoid by putting in an over-55 development. The second thing I'd like to talk about, all of those issues that Mr. Wiles raised, they're very nice and they're very thoughtful, but in order to put that into a contract, we would have to get the town attorney on board to act in what some people feel is in the best interest of the town. Alexa's statement just now shows that, in a lot of people's estimation, and in my estimation, the town attorney may be not acting in the best interest of the town in certain cases. I strongly doubt that these issues would be put into a contract, and I also feel that the town attorney has an interest in getting this property sold and developed. I don't know why, and I won't attempt to take a guess why, but I do know that when I was first elected to the board, I was invited out to coffee with the town attorney, and he pressured me to support his position to sell the club. And I told him no, and he became kind of rattled and kind of offensive, and we had some back and forth, I don't let it go there. But I just want people to understand that there's a backstory to this whole country club thing, which we've experienced during the previous administration and the administrat- your previous administration and the administration before that. And that's all I have to say.
I have to say, if the referendum is approved, we intend to hire outside counsel who has had experience in this, in this kind of a transaction, and he will be acting in the best interest of the town at all times, as I have always done.
Okay, that's it. That's it. Thank you.
Now, will that be from your old firm?
Please, let's all be courteous.
We already have an opinion from outside counsel who is an expert in land use, and he will be the, he either, or that firm will be responsible for putting the transaction together.
Good to hear. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Adrian Michi Smith, 17 Ansonia Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut. Zoning, nobody's talking about zoning. Zoning is a big issue here, Mr. Weiner, you know that. I do not agree with your position. I'm not sure that you agree with your position. If the zoning gets changed on that property, it's going to put the rest of this town in jeopardy, and it's going, going to change the whole character of this town. This is a huge issue. I've been thinking a lot about what possibly could be done. I think, I, I don't have any clear ideas, but a lot of us have been talking about other ways to use this property properly. And I don't think we need to make it, make a zoning change in order to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving along to item eight, I think, are they here? Okay. Come on in, guys. I can't see them at all. I don't know that they know we're done. Do you know, you said "we"? Do you know?
We had an opinion on the land use question by Conan Wolfe, and it is my intention to ask them to represent the town, because they have had experience in this exact kind of situation. They gave a legal opinion that the, that the use would not lead to other similar projects in every town. I suggest people, I suggest people read it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on. I'm gonna ask for quiet so I can continue, please. Before I turn over to Brian St. Pierre and representatives from Warner Construction... I'm gonna, I'm gonna introduce you, if that's okay. Thank you. I'd like to remind you all that the town purchased the property in 2009, and we have had one successful, unsuccessful random so far. Tonight, we will hear from Insight Design and their new partner, Warner Construction. Since Insight was previously approved by the Board of Selectmen, I've asked the team to visit all our major boards and commissions to do a Q&amp;A presentation and give our board and commissions members and the public, anyone can go to any of these meetings, they're all public, and the public many chances to ask their questions. Members of the public are encouraged to attend any upcoming commission meetings to see the presentation and get the facts and ask questions. Once we know the schedule, we will publish it on the website. Next, I plan to ask the Board of Selectmen to schedule a special town meeting in late October or early November, and I anticipate a referendum shortly thereafter. I do not anticipate taking a vote this evening, but it's always up to the board, not me alone, to take a vote, because I want to give the members of the Board of Selectmen time to do their own due diligence on this very important matter. I believe strongly that this is an important and worthy project for the town. The sale of approximately one-third of the land will erase the town's $4.2 million debt. It provides us with a rare opportunity to grow the grand list. The project will create a very limited impact on municipal services with no impact on our schools, and the town will retain 90-plus or minus acres on which we hope to create a multi-use park for all town residents. Thank you, and everyone who speaks, please introduce yourselves at the mic. It's up to you.
Hello, everybody. Good to, good to see you again. Let me, they're all scattered around now, but let me introduce you to everybody that's here today. With us today, we have Bruce Warner from Warner Construction, Max Warner from Warner Construction, Evan Bershle from Warner Construction, Dennis Kokinos, attorney at Owen Schein and Nicola, and good old Justin Burke, who works for me here at Insight. So, Justin is one of the directors at our, at our firm. He's in charge of financial acquisitions and obligations. So, thanks again to everybody for being here. New members, good to meet you. I don't think I've presented in front of you guys yet. Basically, we wanted to, we wanted to come back in front of you this month and kind of give you an update of where we, where we are, what we've been doing over the, over the summer, and, you know, kind of give you the finalization of as much information as we possibly can at this point in the game. We've been very busy this summer, doing certain things like meeting with licensed surveyors and engineers and walking the properties with them. I had the opportunity to, like I said, walk with them and kind of go over our proposal of what we were looking to do and make sure the feasibility that we were proposing is, it was definitely there. Also, things like real estate agents. We've been talking with real estate agents, and they've been running comps for us, you know, in terms of, you know, sale of the homes, to make sure that we were in check with, with our pricing and with the realistic, you know, sale price of the individual homes. And one of the major things we were doing, you know, basically as we were tying up loose ends and defining roles and responsibilities and kind of the dynamics of our team going forward, one of the things that came to the forefront and, and basically, you know, we, we internally, meaning, meaning in- meaning Insight, had to address was, we didn't really have somebody that was part of the team, that was invested in the project, that had a hands-on approach with the actual construction, somebody who was gonna bang nails, you know, be in the trailer and have that hands-on approach. And it became very clear to us that, not only from a business standpoint on my end, but also as a comfort level to the town, we thought this was something that should be part of our, you know, this person should be somewhat part of our team. And that's where the Warner team comes in. Basically, we've been, I've been talking with Warner for about a year now, guys? About a year now, about this project, and, you know, so they're very versed in where we are, where we stand, and the dynamics of the project itself. And we're happy to have them as part of our team. We think that not only are they the right fit for this project, but we also think that they're an upgrade and a benefit to our team. They enhance our team the way it should be enhanced. Now, we have defined roles, you know, we've covered all aspects of this process with the individual partners that we have involved, and obviously, you know, with our legal team too now, it's, we're really starting to focus in and nail down on the specifics as much as we can at this point in the game of the individual project. Some of the other things that we've been doing is, I know the financial aspect comes up, and it's had come up, and we have been, over the summer, we've met with three lenders to discuss the project in more detail and review it, and I can tell you that all three of them are ecstatic about the project, and actually, we have received from one of the banks, a letter of intent to fund and move forward with the project. So, in terms of financial, basically, you know, the banks think it's a very good idea. They like the project, and we have, you know, lenders that are involved in the project at this stage in the game and excited to move forward with the, you know, with going forward. And that's kind of just where we are, what we've been doing, you know, this summer. Basically, what we wanted to do also is refresh everybody with the project, and we'll go through the slideshow again, and Warner will have the opportunity to come up and speak about his company and tell you some details, you know, while we're in this presentation. And that's it. So, Justin, if you want to get started? So, a quick little about us, obviously, I'm sure everybody's sick of hearing about me, but basically, I'm Brian St. Pierre, I'm the owner of Insight Development here in town, and I live here with my wife and three kids, who are currently in Beechwood Road School, and we're an all-purpose real estate design and development firm that specializes in custom residential and small commercial projects. Going into our 19th year, I can happily say, of business, and excited to be part of this project. You know, this project started with me, three years ago now, actually, almost three and a half years, Justin and I were just looking at the first map that we did for this project, and it was in February of 2016. So, we've been working on this project for three years now, and basically, really what started this whole process for me was, I live in this town. This is my tax money. This is something that is of a passion, I guess, you know, I say in here, and it's really true, I am committed to not only the cultural, but the economic expansion of this town. I've lived here for seven years, but I feel like, you know, when people ask me where I'm from and where I grew up, I say Woodbridge, because I love the town that much. And basically, you know, it grew out of the passion for figuring out if we can do something with this site and really helping the town at the same time. And at this point, what I'll do is, I'll invite Bruce Warner and Evan Burchell up, and they'll kind of introduce themselves and give a little.
Before we get there.
We don't have really point of orders in the middle of a, you know.
This is not that kind of a meeting.
Yeah.
There's no point of order.
The Board of Selectmen is having a presentation at this point.
Well, I think that everyone in this room needs to understand some clarity to the project before we turn around and hear a presentation, how much of a slice are we looking at actually selling?
Okay, they're gonna get to that.
They're gonna get to that. There is.
It's a very, stay tuned.
And there is no comment on the presentation.
It's all in there, but there's no comment.
It's a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone, Bruce Warner. We are builders and construction managers, we're not presenters, so if it sounds a little shaky, that's what it is. We met with Brian about a year, maybe a little bit longer than that, ago with one of his high school friends and his dad, who I have a lot of experience with, and they showed us this project, and I said, you know, we have projects like this in our town and that have been very successful, and they went to Cluster Zone, which was much different than what everybody else was used to, and they are just terrific. There's a need for them, people like myself, where the kids are out of the house, you want to sell the house that has four bedrooms or whatever it is, and you want to live in a smaller place that's manageable, and you have somebody cutting the grass that you don't have to worry about calling, the management of the group takes care of it. So, because of that, I had a real interest in the project. I thought that there's a need for it in our town, there's a need for it all around. We're the baby boomers, and we need this. So, I said, you know, this is interesting to me, I'd like to hear more about it. So, over the last year or so, we've talked back and forth, back and forth, of how we can get involved, you know, certainly, they want us as builders, because that's what we do. So, that's what sort of brings us together, those thoughts. And as far as Warner Construction is concerned, we're builders. I grew up in the site construction business, I turned into building back when I first fathomed the idea of going in my own business in 1981, and we've been building ever since. We've built buildings, we've built shopping centers, we've built houses, we've built condominium projects, all over the course of the last 38 or 9 years. We did a project in Florida that's very similar to this, in Naples, Florida, where a developer asked us to come down. As a builder, he was a developer, very much like Brian, actually, his name was Brian, which is funny, and we built 20 homes for him down there, and five of those homes were bigger custom homes, and the other 15 were exactly what he's talking about, between 2,000 and 2,800 square feet, they called them patio homes down there, so it's a, you know, it's a very sort of organized way to do business, you know, you go from digging a foundation to put a foundation, you go to the next foundation, these guys are framing, and you get it organized in a fashion that moves pretty quickly. The difficult part of any development like this for us is the site work, which is my experience and actually, my son's experience. We have our own equipment, so we do our own site work, so we understand it really well, we know drainage, we know erosion control, we know gas piping, water, you know, we understand it very well. So, I think based on those things, I think Brian was very interested in having us come on board with him, because he doesn't have those experiences. He has it as a design person, and we have it as a, like he says it, nuts and bolts hitting the hammer. That's who we are. So, that's the reason why we got involved. We, I think it is going to be successful, because as a baby boomer, I mean, these are the things that people want. In our town, this is what they want. They're forced to sell their big house, and now they're buying condominiums in town that are more expensive than the house they're selling, because there's not enough of them. So, I think these projects, if these projects, if I may, these projects are something that I think would be a winner for the town. I do. I think more people may want these than you might imagine. So, with that, I'll pass it to whoever wants the ball. Brian, you?
You know, I mean.
You have to step up to the mic, because we're taping. Thank you. And you're in TV land, so this is being broadcast.
Sure. So, I'm Evan Burchell. I handle business development for us. Max is my brother-in-law, Bruce is my father-in-law. My mother-in-law is also involved in the business, it's a family business. Yeah, I mean, it says it up there, we have a diverse background, I'm sorry, and this project has some commercial aspects, has some residential aspects, and it's, as Bruce said, getting out of the ground is the part that is going to be the challenging part, if it is, but the houses are bricks and mortar, and we've done them for 40 years. We're excited to be involved. We've worked throughout Connecticut, throughout New York, in Florida, and, you know, I don't know what else to say, really, a lot of it is up there, but I guess, that's it, really, yeah. Yeah. So, we're excited to be working with Brian and his team, so.
So, what we'll do now is, you know, we'll walk through basically the project as we've gone through in the past two years, you know, basically with some updated information and some updated graphics for everybody to look at. But obviously, the project that we're talking about is obviously the existing property there of the Woodbridge Country Club. It's approximately 160 acres, plus or minus, and it's kind of in the triangle there of Ansonia Road, Johnson Road, and Woodfield Road. Basically, we're, you know, we're, in our opinion, we're using the most undesirable part of the piece of the property, the part of the land that one is most hidden, and as I would say, I'd rather have the other 90 acres, 100 acres for a town park, rather than, you know, the valley that's there now. Justin, you want to go through? So, our proposal, same as it's been basically now for two years, we propose to purchase approximately 60 acres of the Woodbridge Country Club site. It is the eastern side of the property, which we'll show out in the next slide, but we plan to build a 55 and older, age-restricted community of approximately 120 homes, with price ranges that go from, you know, that start in the high 400s, and obviously, increase with add-ons and additions. We're offering $5.4 million as a cash closing to the town upon the sale of the land. Included in this proposal is going to be obviously, not only the individual single-family homes, but there are also going to be the new clubhouse for the residents of Wood Valley Estates, tennis courts and pool and fitness center, and obviously, meeting rooms as part of the building that's there. Our other, part of our other, part of the proposal is the improvement of the existing pool and the construction of a new pool house on that property. It's our intention to demo the existing clubhouse for the town and put back a new pool house, and get that public pool open again for the town residences, and, you know, have them enjoy the pool again. Also, as we've been talking, you know, approximately 100 acres of this land will be left in the hands of Town of Woodbridge as public park or whatever they choose to do with it, and obviously, you know, there'll be landscape walking paths throughout our community along, and hopefully tying into the walking paths of the rest of the 100 acres. Sorry, this one takes a second, it's a big file.
I was doing the Jeopardy music.
You don't want me singing.
Here we go.
Yeah, be that file, that slide there. Do you have the, I was gonna say, why don't you just plug in the flash drive and then... Yeah, actually, you know what I can do? I can use the presentation board, it seems like. Pull the whole chair. Oh, to put on the chair?
Just all gonna have to suffer a little here.
So, ultimately, obviously, we, you know, we talked about the existing property and where we're looking to purchase the 60 acres. As we mentioned, nothing, really nothing's changed from previous presentations, it's the eastern side of the property, and as we mentioned, there's, you know, there's approximately 60 acres or so with the 120 homes. Within that development, as we said, you know, there's the town pool and new pool house, the clubhouse for the residences, and also tennis courts and pool for them. Really, what we, you know, again, we'll touch on, you know, the specifics of the project, but this was, is really to show that we like to keep it, our intention is to keep this project as low-profile as we can. Obviously, we know there's an impact, you know, on the town, and we feel that this is the location that is most beneficial to not only the residents of Woodbridge, but also that it's the most hidden of the project. Why don't we go to the next one, Justin? So, this is basically a blown-up version of, and I apologize, it skewed 90 degrees, just so we can fit it on the board there, but ultimately, this project, we laid it out in a way that it was important to us to not just come in in clear cut and make the land fit our project, but rather, the project fit the land. We took a lot of consideration and walked the sites numerous, numerous times to actually pinpoint specific trees that, you know, I can work the project around, and our, you know, our intention is to build this into the landscape and look like it, make it look like it's been there for 100 years versus just, you know, clear-cutting everything and, you know, doing a development like you would, you know, like everybody probably has in their head of what it's going to look like. And as you can see from this, just about all of, sorry, just about all of the trees that you see here are the existing tree lines of this piece of property. This is the existing tree line along the first hole with the cliff, or, you know, with the rock forms over here, so our intention was to fit it into that, this street into that fairway, keeping all the trees that separate the holes that are currently there, and actually adding trees where we need it. And basically, same for the rest of the project, I mean, as you can see, we're keeping the majority of the natural landscape, the mature trees, the aspects that make this project have character, rather than... with this project, the types of buildings that we're, we're looking to, to build, and also, you know, some of the amenities that, that will be involved in it. This is an ide- this is, you know, example of what the residents of the 55 and older communities clubhouse would look like. Um, within this, it is meeting spaces, uh, and a age-appropriate fitness center, um, you know, tennis and pickleball courts, and a pool and, and obviously walking paths throughout the, throughout the property. Moving on to the homes, uh, I believe I've, I've showed this to, you know, the public before. This is a, uh, what we're gonna do is basically four, four to five, uh, different examples of, of the homes, or models of the homes. Um, here's just a couple of examples of, of what the exteriors would look like and also examples of floor plans, uh, that we've come up with, you know, obviously keeping the, the open floor plan look, um, and feel, and also limiting to basically one-story, uh, living, master bedroom on the first floor, um, and, and all the amenities of, of a one, you know, one-story building. In terms of the exterior, it, you know, with the design background, it, it's really my, my job and my intention to make it fit into the neighborhood. I'm, obviously, you know, we can go crazy contemporary, we can, we can do whatever we want, but I think this is the, th- these are examples of exterior looks that, one, we believe fit in the, fit in with the town and, and in that neighborhood that's there, and also with the neighborhood that we're creating. Um, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we're, we're trying to keep the natural landscape of, of this land and, and build it, you know, into the land, and I think these houses are a good example of what we can do and, and the styles that we can, we can achieve with, with this project. Some of the, um, some of the features on the exterior, um, obviously, we're gonna go as, as much maintenance-free as we possibly can. Um, things like hardy board siding rather than vinyl, uh, you know, as an upgrade, um, you know, to, to a vinyl, to a vinyl product. Things like, uh, stone veneer, uh, to add some character to the front of the buildings and, and some depth and, and character. And obviously landscaping and, and sidewalks and driveways and things like that will be...
Excuse me, Brian.
I was gonna say...
It's, could you guys, if you want to have a conversation, I'm hearing your conversation and him.
Do we need to ask questions?
Not at this point. You will have plenty, you'll have plenty of time.
With all due respect, the selectmen have forgotten who they work for.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you're thankful.
Thank you.
But at the end of the day, with all due respect, the current comps on land in Woodbridge are significantly more than what is being proposed here.
Thank you. There will, just a moment. There will be time, there will be time for you to get your questions asked and answered. This is the time. We're hearing a presentation for, to, for the entire board. I can't hear him because you guys are talking. If you want to talk, go outside and then come back in. Happy to have, please.
When will we have an opportunity?
As I explained in the beginning, but I guess you didn't hear me, there will be several meetings coming up where you have ample opportunity. Brian's gonna go for as many meetings, we're gonna post the agenda of all of those meetings on the town website. You can call Mrs. Shaw once we get it up. Betsy will have it, I will have it. You can go and ask your questions, get them answered then. Please, let us hear this. We haven't even heard this. This is the first time we've heard this together. Let us hear, please. It's all I ask, respect. Thank you.
So, to finish up on, on just the exterior features, obviously, you know, it's our intent to, to fit it into the landscape and, and add some ac- extra character to it, um, in terms of, you know, the stone veneer and, and landscaping inside, you know, maybe si- brick sidewalks instead of concrete sidewalks, you know, thing, things of that nature to, to enhance the, the feel of it. This is, uh, a couple of projects that we, we completed, uh, just an example of interior finishes. Um, obviously, within the project, we're looking to do, you know, all, in kitchens, we're gonna do all wood cabinets, um, you know, granite countertops, um, recessed lighting, so on and so forth, you know, and, and obviously some examples of, of what a bath, you know, a master bathroom might look like. Um, this is really just to give you an idea of, of the materials that we'll be using and, and the level of quality, uh, that we intend to, to have on it. And then we'll move on to the, to the Woodbridge pool. So, you know, a- as part of this project, it, it's our intention to not only demo the existing clubhouse, uh, for the town, but also put back, you know, a, a pool house, uh, area and renovate the existing pool and open it back up to, uh, the Woodbridge residences for, for their use. And basically, what you get out of that is, is we're gonna, new pool house, as I mentioned, adjacent to the pool, uh, renovated pool area, and there's, there's some work that needs to be done to the actual pool itself, uh, just over time and deterioration. Um, new pool furniture and, and features, a snack bar within the building, um, changing rooms and showers, and obviously lockers that we can, uh, that you can either rent out or use for the day, uh, as, as storage for your stuff while you're there. So, what does it boil down to? I mean, obviously, the, the benefits to the town, we, we've touched on some of them. But, you know, I, obviously, the, the main one is, we're relieving the town of, of its $4.2 million debt that they currently have on the property, uh, from the purchase back in 2009. Um, for, 5.4 million will be paid to, to the town upon closing, uh, giving the pro- the town approximately a $1.2 million in additional rev- revenue, uh, you know, after, after the debt is paid on the, on the existing property. Based off the current mill rate of 42.2, or, I'm sorry, 40.23, uh, the community would generate about, uh, $1.7 million in new taxes, um, obviously helping to offset any, any future capital expenditures and, and help stabilize, um, our taxes as they, as they currently are now. Um, there's also an additional 500 thou- approximately $500,000 in related building permits and fees. Um, that's obviously from construction side of it, not only the infrastructure, but for the, you know, the houses themselves, obviously, all houses need a, need a building permit. Demolition of the existing clubhouse, we touched on that, uh, at, at Insights' expense. Um, benefit, another benefit is obviously they get to, you know, the town and, and we get to maintain approximately 100 acres, um, of town property. Again, to be, to be used, to be used as, as we decide as a town to, to use it, but, um, in their possession and, and they retain that 100 acres. And we believe it satisfies the, the need for alternative housing for the aging population of, of Woodbridge. You know, we, in one of the previous presentations, I've showed the, the census report where approximately 56% of the, the residents here in Woodbridge are over the age of 45. So, you know, they're, they're either approaching very quickly that, that 55 and older or, or already, already over that, that level. Um, and as Bruce said, you know, th- this is the trend, you know, that one of the, one of the biggest markets in, in the United States right now is the 55 and older market for real estate. I mean, the, these houses are flying off the market. I, you know, my, my in-laws live in Oxford Greens and I, and Justin's in-laws live, uh, in a 55 and older community. You know, the, i- it's, it's a realistic, it, it's a trend and, and it's, and it's here now, and we believe this is the right solution for this property. And basically, you know, a- as we said, there's, there's no impact to the school system and all sidewalks and, and roads will be maintained by the HOA for the town, I'm sorry, for the, um, development, and there's no impact there on, on the public works, you know, department. And, you know, so what, you know, basically what's in it for the Woodbridge residents? Um, you know, obviously, we, we get a new pool, um, a renovated pool and pool house to enjoy, uh, opening that back up. One of the things this summer that I was able to do, um, we, we spoke with a lot of residents here in Woodbridge over the last couple of months, and I would say 80% of them were, were people who ca- who came up to me and to ask me questions, how's it going? You know, where, where do we stand, so on and so forth? And I will say 60 to 70% of the questions that I received from the public was, when can you open that pool and when you're gonna open it again? You know, what, what's happening with it and when, how fast can we open it? Can we get it for next summer? Um, so, it, you know, it's something that I, I know personally, i- is, is something that we would like to have in the town again and, and we intend to, to help get that back. Um, 100 acres of, of public park and walking trails. I mean, obviously, you know, that, it's a, it's a benefit that the town and the townspeople get to still use this beautiful piece of property. Um, and, and in my opinion, the most beautiful part of, of that property, the, the best 100 acres. And as we said, you know, it's up for the town to decide what we do with that land, but obviously, pic- you know, the thought is picnic areas, maybe, you know, some fishing in that pond if we can ever get it, um, and obviously the walking trails. Also, it's an elimination of, of the debt on the property. Um, why does that help the residents? Well, we're paying taxes on it now. It's, uh, it's coming out of our pocket and it, it's something that we can say we, we eliminated from, from our taxes. Um, it also stabilizes pr- uh, our property taxes. Uh, obviously, we all know our taxes are not gonna go down. I know people are behind me, oh, it's gonna, you know, it, they're not. We understand that, but, but what it does is stabilize the property, the taxes and hopefully not increase at all because we're growing our grand list and, and, you know, obviously providing, I, I believe it was $1.7 million in, in additional tax revenue per year. And for, you know, one of, one of my most important things or one of my, you know, contingencies on this project wa- is the, the, the conditions of it. I mean, obviously, we, we know that, that we've let it go by the wayside because, you know, there's, there's things that we're, we're doing with it. We're, we're talking about a plan. We're, we're trying to devise a plan and, and in the meantime, so it's just improved, uh, improved property conditions, obviously overall, not only on the 60 acres that we'd be purchasing, but, but also the 100 acres, uh, that the town would own. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to, to questions from the board if, if they have any. Uh, one last thing with that, before we do that, um, we are currently working with a, with a marketing firm a- as we speak on this project, and the, the, that, that, that will be the website for, for the development. It is not officially up at this moment. It'll, it'll give us about, you know, uh, one more week and, and it'll go live, but that, that's a website that you can go to not only for information about the project, you know, this, this slideshow will be on there in terms of, you know, additional questions and facts about the project, and it'll also have links to, to social media where, you know, the public can a- ask questions of me and, and get answers.
I think it would be helpful if we could get a copy of the presentation for the board to keep.
Absolutely.
And also then we can get it up on the website for all residents.
Perfect.
Okay, that'd be helpful. So I'd invite it, invite all, uh, selectmen members to begin asking questions. Oh, Sandy, you're over there.
I, I have a question.
Go from...
So, I'm, I'm not clear on your relationship with the...
Werner. Sure.
In other words, I understand that you do the design, they do the building and the construction.
Mm-hmm.
So, h- how do you actually work together financially? Who's actually raising the money?
Yep.
Or getting the money from the bank?
Absolutely. So, so we, Werner and I are partners in the deal. I mean, we're, we're essentially 50/50 partners. Uh, decision-making and, and process, you know, i- is 50/50. Um, I, I'll be handling more of the, you know, the back office information, so to speak, you know, and planning. Werner will be the, the boots on the ground, handling the day-to-day, um, activities, you know, or, or process.
He's designed the...
Yeah, so, uh, but, but the, the working relationship, and Dennis can touch on it more, i- is a partnership. I mean, we, we are, we are a team, we're a partnership, uh, financially and, and, you know, responsibility-wise.
So financially, financially, it's 50/50 also in terms of...
I can, I can kind of address that.
Okay, thank you.
So there will be a, there will be a formal entity that's going to be established between Werner and Insight Design will be a separate legal entity, and that legal entity will be governed by either an LLC, a partnership agreement, whatever the attorneys, like myself, the other, the other two that are working on it, and the accountants team is appropriate for their, their, um, circumstances. The, that agreement will lay out the specific obligations and rights of each of them, um, but as, from my discussions and from what everything that, that Brian has told me and speaking with Werner, is the majority of their decision-making regarding this project will be something done jointly. Um, uh, the financial aspect of what their percentages are is not something that's, that's, that, that we're gonna be speaking about at all. It's, I don't think it's appropriate, but I understand the question as far as wanting to know.
What's the entity, Brett?
About the, yeah, there'll be a separate legal entity, but we're both, we're both Brian and, and Werner Construction will be a part of, um, and that separate legal entity, like many others, have operating agreements that say, you're supposed to do this and you're supposed to do that, and they have a myriad of different, um, rights and obligations and go into all the legalese. I'm, you know, not gonna go into the specifics of it. But it will be a separate entity between the two, and I should also mention that when people are going out for financing, you don't get to just sign the legal entity and say the legal entity's gonna be responsible. That's not gonna happen, so the individuals sitting over here, they're gonna have a significant, you know, a, a financial stake into this.
Right.
Because the, the people over here are gonna have to be putting, uh, you know, putting their, their, their name on something. So, um, I did hear that one public comment about the finances, but, you know, the people, people next to me have to be very comfortable with this project because they're the ones that at the end of the day that if, that are gonna have to be responsible to the, to the lending institution or investors, so.
Okay. And the marketing and the sales component of this is that...
And I'm sorry, I never said my name again for the record.
Yes.
I should have introduced Dennis Kokinos from Owens, Shining, Nicola. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for...
So, the marketing and the sales component of this, is that under the, under you as Insight Design, or is that under the new, newly-formed entity?
It, it, everything will be under the new entity, and, and obviously, you know, we haven't finalized that yet. Obviously, you know, until there's an actual project, you know, we'll, we'll get into that, but we've already started the process, you know, the three of us, you know, attorneys and, and, you know, Werner. Um, and yes, we, we'll be handling, you know, marketing and, and that's all under, under this entity as a team. I mean, it, we're a team now.
Okay.
The, the paper's not signed, but, but we're a team.
All right. One other question about the actual building of the homes. Um, do you start in one geographic location and you build from there? What if people say, no, that's not the location I want, I want the one that's all the way at the end? How do you handle that?
Sure. Yeah, so obviously, you know, with any project, we'll probably start with the clubhouse and, and the pool area. Obviously, we need a leasing center or a selling center. Um, and the intention is that we bu- we will build 10 model homes, so one or two of, of each model, uh, to begin with, um, as model homes, and from there, hopefully, we, we get everybody to our doorsteps where they, they will be able to select the, the piece of land that they would like to purchase. Um, we, I will say, and Bruce can probably touch on it more, essentially, the whole infrastructure will have to be put in at first. Um, leaving, you know, obviously, the, the plumbing and, and all that kind of stuff. So, people will be able to see where the, where their particular project would be, and, and we will. We'll build, you know, obviously, we're gonna build as we go, and, and not as we go, but we're gonna build to keep inventory on, on the, on the market, but we'll, we'll also build to, to, you know, to suit, basically. If, if somebody wants a particular piece of property, then, then we'll build for them.
Okay. I mean, the reason I'm asking that is that in terms of, it will take many years, I would presume, to actually sell all of these, um, pieces of land and the homes, and so how long will people be living with construction right around them if you can kind of pick and choose as opposed to just move around the property in terms of building?
E- exactly, and, and obviously, our intention is, is to build the most desirable lots first. Uh, you know, the, the ones that are along the ridge that will have sunsets every night and so on and so forth, those will be the ones that, that we'll start with, um, and, and go as, as we go. But I, I understand, I understand the question, you know, do, what, do we tear up the whole piece of property?
Right.
Or do we, or do we start in a sp- specific area? And again, it might come down to timing also, you know, so the intent is to keep it all department, you know, departmentalized, but maybe that, that person that wants the, you know, the, the house that's on the other side of the piece of the property, maybe they need to wait six months or a year for us to, to start the project because we're not down at that area yet.
Thank you.
Well, and I want to thank Werner, I appreciate you showing force, if you will, and demonstrating a little commitment from that perspective, so thank you. Um, but one of the concerns raised is experience, and you've got limited experience in terms of this type of project on your side, and you've openly indicated that this is not the, the type of project, or specifically the type of project that, of this scale that you've done. You've mentioned the one in Naples. I'd just like you to address a little bit in terms of that. Obviously, you've been in business a long time, there've been a lot of first-time you've done projects. I recognize that, um, but just in terms of this type of project.
You, you have to come up to the mic, I'm sorry. TV land again.
Yeah, move the other chair out and then you can sit next to each other.
Yeah, maybe a good idea.
Hi, this is Bruce Werner again. Uh, we have built a number of condominium projects that have, you know, 40, 60 units, and the way I see this working, and I think Brian tried to point it out, is, you know, you're not building 120 homes at one time. You're, you're gonna build them as you go, which is how we've done the other projects. You don't build every condo at the same time, you're building sections at a time. So, I think the plan is, is probably in the 10 to 15 range, and, you know, you have those under construction. These aren't complicated homes, they're pretty simple, they're small, so, you know... And the way I see this working, and I think Brian tried to point it out, is, you know, you're not building 120 homes at one time. You're going to build them as you go, which is how we've done the other projects. You don't build every condo at the same time, you're building sections at a time. So I think the plan is probably in the 10 to 15 range. And, you know, you have those under construction. These aren't complicated homes, they're pretty simple, they're small. So, you know, these things are going to go pretty quickly. And it's all the things that we do every day. We have a whole residential group of our company, but that's all they do, is kitchens and bathrooms and small projects like this. So, you know, to say that I haven't built 120, no, I'm not that kind of a developer. I'm not a developer, I'm a builder. You ask me to build them, I'll build them. This is not rocket science, this is just hard work. This is get dirty, get your hands in the middle of it and get it done. You've got to pour concrete, you've got to get electricians, you've got to get plumbers, you've got to get toilet accessories, you've got to get all the pieces that everybody knows here, everybody has a house. It's not that complicated, it's just hard work.
And in comparison to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, and basically to touch on Bruce's and to answer your question. Bruce has different divisions of his company. He has the site work division of his company. He has the residential, you know, part of it. So this is just the marrying of all his abilities within his company.
We do have carpenters, we do have site work people, we have masons. We understand it, we know how to do it.
And I want to speak for Bruce, but, you know, I guess the point is, I'm sure he's done site work projects that were a lot bigger than this site work project, you know. The houses, obviously, he and I both, you know, design and build more complicated and, you know, detailed, bigger houses.
Plus, we just did a pool project for the town of Greenwich. It's a large pool, but it also has the building next to it and the pump houses. And we just got finished doing that last year, so we get it, we understand.
And relative to the projects that you have done and considering where we are and what you've seen of this project, where do you say you are and what concerns, challenges, or is it, you know...
For me, the challenge is selling them. To me, that's a challenge. Building them isn't very hard. And that's why the banks probably just finance, you know, exit number until you sell some, some come out. Because building them's not a problem, it's selling them. And that's what, you know, Brian and the marketing team on his side is going to hopefully do.
But if I might, Bruce, you're saying building them, I understand that generally speaking. Have you seen, I know your folks have seen the property, so you're not seeing any...
Well, no, I see, I think the challenge is the entrance. Because now you've got a grade change, you've got some rock, you've got... But basically, where these houses, where these guys have placed these houses, it's, there's not a lot, you know, a lot to do up there. I mean, it follows the land pretty nicely. And that section up there, I think, is pretty nice for building. Getting to it is a little different, but, you know, that's part of what we do.
So along those lines, is there any heavy drilling that you think you're going to need to do?
Well, we have to do some test borings on that entrance road. I think up top, I don't think you're going to need any. You might need some hammering or something along, you know, to get into the site.
Sure, sure, that I understand.
So it's our intention, and really, the way I laid out the project, was to minimize any impact on rock that we can. And we believe if we encounter any of it, that we can do it with machines and break up that rock.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
And, you know, take it from there.
Sorry, Mika.
Exactly.
No, exactly.
100%.
But, I mean, you can see that, you know, we're probably going to run into something there. We just don't know how much and what type of rock and that kind of...
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So I think what I'm hearing is your plan to do like 10 on spec, if you will, right away, right?
Well, yes, but I think some of those are models.
Yeah, the 10 models.
But you would sell it, right?
Exactly.
If I went to buy one, you'd sell it.
You betcha.
So it's a spec count, I mean, you're buying it to sell. It's not built because I said I want that and I want this.
No, no, you're right.
Right. And so when you sell those 10, you'll build another, or when you sell five, you'll start building...
Yeah, I think they'll all be in the works, they'll be in the plans. And we break ground when we decide to break ground, when it makes financial sense.
Right. But I was a little unclear, suppose you build 10, and then I come along and I say, well, those are very nice, but I want to be on that lot and I want that particular model. Because you're going to offer, what, three or four and five models?
Four or five, that's not bad.
Would you build it for me?
Yes, yes, that's the intent. I mean, the models are just to get people in the door, basically. Obviously, show them the level of quality, show them the idea of how the floor plans lay out, so on and so forth. Walk them through so that they can pick which, you know, the first 10, like you said, Joe, will be on spec. And then the rest, you know...
So I'm just trying to...
I also see it like, okay, the road's going in, and as that road's going in, once we're up into the site, we're going to start foundations of those models. So the road may not be to that lot that you're looking at when the first two models are going up.
So if I want that lot, you tell me, I got to wait.
You got to wait till the road is up, and once that road's up...
So if I say to you, I want that lot, you say, yes, you got to wait, we'll build this house on that lot.
We're going to say...
Dwight comes next and says, geez, that's great, Joe, I want the one right next door.
Yeah, but he's got to pay more.
And I love that house and I want to build it right next door.
He's got to pay more, he came in second.
Yeah, so that...
Good.
So, Joe, I know where you're getting at.
I'm getting at you could have five of the same house.
So that, this is common in developments, basically, when you see all these single-family developments. They might be able to pick the same model, but they will not be able to pick the same exterior features. So in other words, some might have stones, some might have bricks, some might, you know, some might have blue siding, some might have white siding. So we have to, as a team, make sure that that doesn't happen at the same house.
Right, we don't want Levittown. Yeah, we're not selling Levittown. Although that was successful.
And Joe, that happens. That happens in every development. I mean, you know, that's how they lay it out. And once you pick yours, it almost takes off the ability...
So if he likes mine right next door, but you're going to put some rock where I don't have it and some different colored siding...
There'll be features that are different.
What bank, can you share the banks that you talked about? I mean, if you can't, you can't. I mean, it's just curious.
I can, but, you know, the point is, I don't know what's public and not public, you know, at this point, and what we can and can't say.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any of the bank documents with me.
I'm not asking for details, just kind of get an idea of, you know, what banks it is.
It's a local bank.
Yes, the local region, all three of them are local regional banks.
Connecticut banks.
Connecticut banks.
Local regional banks and also banks that are not local who have affiliates in Connecticut who team up on lending together many, many times. Because they do it reciprocal, if somebody's in Connecticut and they have something in Massachusetts or Rhode Island.
And early on, I got feedback from a bank that we do a lot of business with. And I sent him the idea of, you know, what do you think about this? And he said, you know, when you're ready, come see me. And he would definitely finance it, I know. And they're a big bank. Not the biggest, like Bank of America kind of thing, but they're a good-sized bank.
Dennis Kokinos again from Owen Shining Nicola. When I got involved with Brian and when one of the issues about the lending came up, which is an understandable concern, one of the things I explained to Brian and Bruce and whoever would listen is that the banks are going to provide you with a certain amount of assurances as much as they can now. I mean, when you don't have a referendum that's been passed, you don't have a specific contract that's been signed, it makes it difficult to bring it over that goal line where you're going to get, right now, you're going to get a letter of intent.
You get a cursory.
Yeah, you're going to get a cursory letter of intent, you're going to get a lot of people who say, obviously, this is an incredible project. But there is a level of frustration because, you know, everyone you speak to, everyone Brian speaks to or my connections at my firm, everyone says, absolutely, this is a great idea. But we obviously need to see a little bit more to give you that stamp of approval that we're doing this. Not much more because basically, it's a contract. A lot of things start with a contract and authorities to sell and all those types of things. But when you're deficient in providing the bank those additional documents, it makes it almost impossible to get that complete assurance. But I was actually blown away at how many people and how many banks were happy to actually drive many hours to come down and listen to this and leave and actually come back and say, what would you like me to put in writing that I possibly can? Because they want the business, it's that simple.
I'll touch on it, Dennis kind of just hit on it. I mean, I believe it was Thursday at lunchtime, we met with this particular bank and we received a letter from the CEO of that bank Friday morning at 9 o'clock with their letter of intent, you know, basically saying that they were... So, you know, this is from the CEO himself. I mean, again, it is what it is, Joe, you're a lawyer, you understand that paper...
I do, I understand.
Yes.
As you might expect, there's always a concern as to the economy tanking in the middle of a project and having a significant impact on it. And one of the concerns, obviously, is, okay, what could happen to that property if you decide that this is not going to work out? Or is there, have you in the past, or is there a potential for the type of language in there that, from the town's perspective, assures that this is what's going to be there type of thing?
Better question for the lawyers. But the answer is yes. I mean, obviously, our intent is to build what, you know, what is there and complete the project. I don't want to be stuck with a finished project either, so...
Yeah, the question is, when the 100-year flood happens again, are we going to have proper water shoots, right? It's kind of one of those things, which is, I get about questions because 2008 could happen, whatever. But, I mean, from my perspective, we plan on working with the town with any contract language. We already know that it's going to be deed restricted. So, you know, there was some talk before about, you know, bankruptcy and those types of things along these lines of questioning. Look, any asset that ends up in bankruptcy is going to be the asset it is. And if you've got an asset that has a deed restrictive home on it, that's what the asset is. So, you know, whoever buys it is going to be stuck with that deed restriction as well. So the town on that end would still be getting what it bargained for, which is a deed restrictive parcel of land. But yeah, I mean, we're more than happy and actually expecting to work with the town on any type of deed restrictions that have to go on, you know, on the land or within the contracts.
Just a follow-up, we've mentioned previously... That we would insist on a deed restriction, saying that this can only be used for 55 and older housing. That would be unequivocal, the town's position, and we won't compromise on that. And that was in the opinion that we received from Conowulf four, five years ago. They have had experience doing that and that protects the town. There'll also be options in the agreement in the event that you want to sell, you need to sell it to somebody, which we don't anticipate happening, but if that happens, the town will have an option to, a variety of first refusal to get it back.
So there's a lot of other things that we can do.
Dennis, right?
Yes.
Dennis, you're talking to Dennis, he knows all that.
Yeah.
Could you explain that a little more for everybody else because it does...
To you?
The deed restriction will say that this property, the 60 acres that are being sold, in consideration for the town selling it, cannot be used for anything other than 120 units, maximum 120 units, age-restricted housing. And we will define what age-restricted housing is in the agreement. 55 and older, no minor children, things like that. But there's a long definition that has already been used in various deeds that this Conowulf has represented the town's in, that we will incorporate in our restrictions. Also, planning and zoning has to approve this application before it is a final go. Planning and zoning will also be in a position to institute other protections for the town in terms of where it's going to be built, the kind of building it has to be, the kind of roads you have to put in. So there are several levels of protection, and we understand the town's concern. But that's the concern, I think, of what it's lacking, to make sure the town is protected in all aspects.
So if something happens to these folks, you know, during the project or whatever, it's deed restricted? Forget bankruptcy, but if they sell it to somebody else, it's deed restricted.
Right.
So how does that impact affordable housing?
It can only be built for 55 and older housing.
I just wanted people to understand.
Yes, right.
And then, but the other side of that is, you're locked into someone who wants to come in and build 55-year-olds.
Yes, absolutely.
So if something happens to these guys, then we need another of these guys that wants to build 55 and older.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure everybody understands.
And Jerry, to touch on your point, I believe in my first slide, I actually have some of the language. I mean, obviously, it's not legal, but, you know, I say in there, it's 55 and older, you know, at least one person needs to be 50, you know, living in that home needs to be 55. No minors under the age of 18 are to live at that house for an extended period of time. Like, that's actually in my first slide, you know, that we have up there. So we fully intend, you know, that is our intention, and I'll leave it up to the legal minds to come to terms with that.
And I think it's a good market.
Yeah, and we think that's our best chance here, is that 55 and older.
Okay, Dwight, do you have any questions?
I've got a bunch of questions.
Dwight?
What is the date of what you consider to be the close when the 5.4 million transfer stands?
Yeah, obviously, is that right after referendum, referendum passes? No, so let me explain.
You know, so that's a question because a lot of people ask me that.
Absolutely. So basically, the sale of the land is contingent on the zoning approval. So really, my best guess is, you know, June of a closing date. But it all depends on how long the zoning approval process and permitting process, you know, not building permits, but, you know, zoning approval process goes. So best guess...
That was the other question.
Best guess is June of 2020. I mean, that's when I'm handing the town...
What approvals you're going to need, okay, before you get everything approved, you get a green light to build? What are all the various approvals? You're going to, I'd like, you know, because I like it in writing, too, I like to have it in writing. And then I like to have an estimate of the timeframe of, once referendum goes and you get a green light, you going to put any money down?
Uh, yes, yes, there's a deposit, there's a deposit.
How much is the deposit, or we could talk about that, so I don't care.
We can talk about that separately, but the standard deposit is 10%.
Yeah, significant enough that it's worthwhile. It's not going to be 20 bucks.
And then, once that's done, how many approvals, how many agencies or commissions are you going to have to go through? Are you going to be able to do them all at once? Do you have to do one, then to go to the other, then to go to the other?
Very good question.
And I, you know, and I'd like to find out maybe an estimate or a time schedule of basically, you know, once you do that, you know, okay, what you anticipate.
Sure, yeah, so literally, as soon as we, as soon as there's an approval of a referendum, that following month, we'll probably be in front of the town in terms of zoning. So zoning is really the first and foremost that we need to address. That's going to be the longest one, Dwight. Again, it could take one month or it could take 10 months. I mean, I've gone through projects where, you know, a year later, we still don't have a decision. But other ones of this size that, hey, you know, it's a great project, it's a go, kind of thing. So zoning, we're going to have to touch base with conservation and inland wetlands.
Health department.
Yeah, obviously, you know, that comes with...
With the roads.
Yeah, with the building permit.
Brian, you probably don't need conservation, you need planning and zoning inland. Those are the adjudicatory boards that we have that make decisions on the zoning. Am I correct?
Yeah, every town is different, some have to, you know, there's more boards than others. Some handle more than one thing within town. But to answer your question, you know, Dwight, I believe that the zoning process is going, I'm planning for six months, just with zoning.
What if it takes a year? What if it takes a year and a half, two years? Are you guys willing to stem the course?
Absolutely.
I'm just asking a question.
I've been here for three years already.
No, no, I'm just asking a question because sometimes, you know, you want to get going.
I mean, I'm not going anywhere, Dwight, you know, I live in the town, I'm not going anywhere. I've been here for three years already and I'm still here.
So along these same lines, so are you willing to go to the different boards and commissions in town and present?
Yes.
So that there's an opportunity for people who already participate in town government to hear from you and ask questions?
Yeah, so to answer your question, there's two aspects of that. Yes, starting next month, basically, we are going to start presenting in front of all the various town boards. One, it gives the public an opportunity to voice their opinion and speak and hear the presentation and understand what's going on. But after zoning approval, I'm sorry, after the referendum, then we go into the zoning approval process.
Process.
Where we actually put in an application and have to be approved. So the answer is, we'll be in front of the boards probably twice within the next three, four months.
All right.
Do you see any concerns about getting planning and zoning approval? Because now with the zoning change, the property's not zoned for that. Do you see any major concerns about challenging it? I'm asking a question.
Yeah, obviously, Dwight, I mean, you know, that's our biggest, what we believe is our biggest challenge in this project. You know, we've spoke with numerous zoning lawyers ourselves, not only, you know, the report from the town that they had gotten way back when. But, you know, Dennis has somebody in his office that deals with zoning that we've talked to. And listen, yes, I mean, it's up to decision. So, I mean, we're at the hands of whoever's voting and approving it. But as far as concerns, I mean, other than the obvious ones, no. I do not see anything, you know, blaring that, hey, we have a huge wetlands area in the middle of the area of what we're trying to purchase. No, I mean, we've already done that due diligence and know kind of what is involved in the land.
Do you have approval from the state because you're exiting on a state road? Do you have approval from the state, 'cause you're exiting on a state road?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that part of the approval process before you're gonna start?
Well, that, that-
I mean, I just, 'cause, 'cause when you need that, too.
There'll be, there'll be a traffic study.
You would have to go to that, you would have to get it approved, do all your, all your exit plans, maybe a light they may require, whatever it is, you would, you would end up-
There'll be, there'll be a traffic study done, you know, post referendum, um, along with, you know, other studies that, that the state will do, uh, it is a state road, so obviously, anything you do on there, we, we have to get their approval, um, and you're right, I mean, they, they might require a light, they might, you know-
Oh, it's gonna take a while, too.
And, and obviously-
It's gonna take a while, too, to get state approvals.
Yes, exactly, I mean, and, and listen, we, we also have to talk with local water authority, you know, we have to, to get the water into the, into the property, we need to do electrical, we need to do, you know, the, the sewer, I mean, th- those, these are all things behind the scenes that we'll be doing, 'cause it's required by zoning, I mean, it's part of the zoning process, obviously, that they're gonna need to know, you know, what, what's going into this.
And you'll have civil drawings by the time you go into zoning.
Just curious, will the, will the houses have sprinklers, fire protection, built in as part of the base, or will they-
Actually, that is a good question, I didn't think about that.
Normally, a lot of new houses have them, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, 55 and older, I, I would, I would assume, you know, some so, I mean, some sort of protection, whether, I mean, it's obviously not gonna be an, an F P 13 system, but-
I, I think that's a good question, I'll chime in, I think the building code would, would probably require what, would probably state whether or not, based on this development, if it's required, and if it's required, it's required.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, though.
Would that be something you would offer?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's a very good question, Dwight, I, I, I actually didn't, I, I, it's not something that I thought about at this stage in the game, obviously.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that's all. I got a question for Bruce, uh, current workload, I'd like to get your current workload, what you currently have now on your books.
We could use some work right now, but this starts later.
As well as any contracts or, or things that you have coming up in the next year or two, that could affect this, your, your work on this project.
I'll tell you how I answer that.
And if you could send us, that'd be great, you don't, I'm just-
Okay, okay.
But I just, you know, but again, are you, you're, if you're looking for work, then-
No, we're bidding all the time, so, you know, it's a good question.
But if you could send that, that'd be great, 'cause I'd like to get, and plus what you have-
But you hit it right on the head, Dwight, I mean, this is, this is a year down the road, so, any, anything that he currently has now, obviously, that probably-
I was returning construction, so I know, you know, I did a lot of the fine return, so-
Oh, did you?
Oh, yeah, so, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just, I just wanna make sure we're okay going forward.
We're looking for a project manager up here.
I retired after 45 years, so.
Now I know why the good questions are so good.
Yeah, because my next, my next question was, if your workload, what will, you know, will it affect working on this project?
Yeah.
You know, it, you know, if you, if you have like millions, if you have a bunch of work, and you have things that you have to get done, okay, what effect will it, will it have here? 'Cause I'm looking at the info, you guys are partners, I just wanna make sure we're all-
I hear you, we, um, I think we're very good at managing that, we, we, we will stop bidding if we're, if we are, feel like we're maxed out, so we're not gonna add a job just to add a job, and then hire some triboney off the street that doesn't know what he's doing, sells us a bill of goods, and all of a sudden, we have a job that's in trouble, so, we, we, the people that work in our company, which is about 30, 35 people right now, including the trades, have been in our company, the management people in our company have been there over 20 years, every single one of them, our, our chief financial officer, she's been with me 30 years, Max is 18 years, our senior project managers, 22 years, our chief estimators, 23 years, uh, they've been there a long time, so, we don't, we don't use a lot more than that, we, we focus on what we have, and we make sure we can get done what we're focused on, and then we'll move to the next.
And that brings me into my next question is, how many of your staff would be, would be assigned to this project? How many of the superintendents that are Wernit superintendents, how many are project man, Wernit super, project manager, you're not gonna hire off the street for this project?
No, we-
I'm just curious to see, look in, look in where we are today, and what's, what's been discussed.
Well, ideally, ideally, we have two superintendents that would be excellent, that, that I think could handle it without a problem, the project management part of it, a lot of that is done today in the office, so a lot of the project management, of course, we would have weekly meetings up there, and the project manager would be involved in that, I go to weekly meetings, Max goes to weekly meetings on all of our jobs, Evan goes to some of the meetings as well, so, what, what, if we have a meeting on site, it's gonna be, one of the ownership is gonna be there, the project manager or project executive is probably who would handle it, and of course, the superintendent, and as things progressed, if we started having more, more on board than we do, we'd add, add another superintendent, or an assistant to one of those guys to, to, to take up the slack, so that's the way we sort of envision that work, all the buying and everything would be done at the office.
In the office.
Yeah.
And then, your superintendent would be assigned full-time, so-
Full-time, full-time.
So he'd be on the site, he would be not-
Office trailer.
He'd be not leaving at 2 o'clock to go check on another job, and then come back, or whatever it is, he'd be-
If he does, no, no, and by the way, as soon as we get wifi up there, there's a camera coming in, so we see who comes in, who leaves, um, you know, we're, we're, no, we're, that's not how we operate, we have full-time people on the job.
I just wanna make sure there's gonna be a full-time-
Yes.
And then, what about safety? Do you have a full-time safety guy?
Well, I think-
Or is your superintendent?
The superintendents are all trained, oh, they're all trained, uh, we may or may not have laborers from time to time, they're all trained, we're all trained, uh, I was on the board of the Association of General Contractors of State of Connecticut, and I was on their safety committee, we're very, very interested in safety, and if we're not-
Ocean 30 hour?
Yes, they all have, so, and, you know, that, that training is excellent, but, you know, the thing about, about safety is, you know, you have an accident, your insurance rates go through the roof, and you, you know, you, you can't be competitive, so, you know, we're very, very conscious of that. Unfortunately, these are single family that aren't very tall, so, most, most of your safety is from falls and ladders, and, you know, we're not up more than 30 feet and 25.
All right, so what, well, just talking about ocean, just curious, what do you use for a fall?
Six-foot fall, 10-foot fall? What do you mean?
On your safety, so if you're, if you're above six feet, you have to be with a harness?
Yeah.
You're above 10 feet?
Harness, am I right?
I think it's five feet, right?
Five feet, you use them? Okay.
We are all trained with that stuff.
We have all the harnesses?
We have the DOT, DOT register, all those, you know, levels are mandatory when you get to that.
Do you have all your subcontractors sign your safety program?
Absolutely.
Does everybody get trained when they come onto the project?
Everybody, Max, you can speak to that.
Yes, yep, we have safety manuals, our staff-
And you have a site-specific safety plan?
Yes, and there's-
For each, each project and all that?
It's part of every subcontractor's contract.
Weekly job meetings.
Full box talks.
Full box talks.
So, so with the trades and subcontractors, um, do you bring your own, would you entertain using people locally? Because we have a lot of them.
You do, well, that's good.
Well, that was my next question, I wanted to say, how do you contract it out? Do you use the same contractors throughout, which means, once you hire a plumber, that guy does all 120 homes, 'cause it's all consistent, when you do, when you do granite, or when you do flooring, or you do, if the quality is still the same throughout, or do you, or do you do it by, by trade, I mean, by the number of homes, okay, we're gonna build 15 homes, we use X, Y, Z electrical, he'll, and plumber, whatever it is, he'll do this, okay, now the next set of homes is six, eight months later, okay, now we gotta get another set of contractors, or is that, you, you, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, so Dwight, I mean, listen, that, you know, the, the answer to that question is, is buying power, I mean, obviously, when it comes to granites and, and, you know, finishes and material, we obviously wanna stay with the same company or same, you know, person, manufacturer, because we're gonna negotiate those-
Labor and all that, too, you wanna be, you wanna be consistent.
And it's the same with some, you wanna be consistent.
Ideally, ideally, it would be the same people, ideally, and, and I say ideally, because, you know, companies come and go, and they, they become more reliable, less reliable, and if you have to make a change, you, you interview, and you get somebody that's just as qualified, and you show them the work, and this is what has to be done, but ideally, it would be advantageous for everybody to have that.
You bond anybody? Do you bond your contractors?
Uh, only if it's over a million bucks.
Any more, Dwight?
Yeah, I got a few.
Okay, all right.
Come on, we're on a roll here.
If there is any blasting or hammering?
Yep.
How do you deal that, how do, how do, how do you deal with that with the neighbors?
So, they, they can speak on it, because I know they-
'Cause the thing is, there have been projects here in town, and they haven't been blasted, but they have a jack, you know, they have the, you know-
The hammer.
Jack, they have a hammer, and it's during the day, and it drives the neighbors whacko.
Right.
You know, things, so, that, you know, and, you know, and again, there's no good time to do it, can't do it at night.
Nope, no, you don't wanna do it anyway.
It's hard during the day, so, I'm just curious, how do you, how do you ha, how do you handle that with it, with the-
I think it's, well, first of all, I think everybody and all the neighbors would get notified, but, second of all, I think you have to decide, you know, what, what it is we actually have to do, we have to cut this section right here, now, if, if it's real hard rock, and you start hammering, you're not going anywhere.
You're not going, right.
So, you know, maybe they have to be drilled, and maybe they, maybe they have to be drilled and hammered, may, you know, maybe there's a, a method that we can use, we don't wanna hear it either, so, I think this is in everybody's interest to try to keep the noise as little as possible, and get it done.
But how do you handle the concerns of the neighbors? If you do have to hammer, if you do have to do with some minor blast, how do you handle that? Because a lot of neighbors up there have wells and all that, and they're wor, they're worried about-
Cracking.
Affecting the well, cracking the well, you know, there, it is.
Yeah, no, no, I, listen, I hear you.
It's all there, so, you know, so I'm just curious, do you actually send a letter out?
Yeah.
To all the neighbors?
Yeah, well, anytime, anytime you blast, you have to do that.
So, so I have a question that maybe precedes that, 'cause I don't know the answer, that's why I ask the question, but as part of the approval process with P and Z, do you have to have your test borings done, and do they have to, you have to say to them, in other words, before they approve this project, do they know whether there's any drilling or blasting and all that, or you just know that, once you get there?
I mean, yes, to a certain extent, yes.
There's gonna be a civil drawing that's gonna show the cuts and fills in all these areas?
Right.
And I think the only area that was really of concern of mine when I walked the site was, is that entrance getting into that, uh, getting up into that plateau.
On Woodfield, yes.
But where I'm going with that, I know what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I do, well-
And maybe that shouldn't have been approved, right?
No, I'm not saying it's not approved.
No, no, I'm just saying, does the town know before we approve it, whether there's gonna be blasting and drilling and hammering and so forth, 'cause if they do that-
They probably don't, they probably don't get into that. They probably don't get into that, how, how it's gonna be done, but they know that it, something has to be done to be approved.
They'll, they'll have the geological tests, Joe, that show with our test borings-
Joe, were you asking about the town, we, you know, the residents voting for this, knowing, no, you're asking about plan and zoning?
I'm asking the residents right in that, right in that area.
So, plan and zoning would have to know, right, you're doing-
Well, they're saying not necessarily specific.
Why? I thought they did.
Yeah, I mean, like, like, I, I mean-
My understanding is that, when I've seen projects before, our planning and zoning, I've seen a lot of them, that they get detailed maps with the results of the, of the, uh-
Test borings.
Test borings, and they can put restrictions, they actually have the authorities say, we don't want blasting, we want drilling, and they do know it, and they participate, they do participate.
They didn't do that in a certain instance.
The other thing you can do is, you can drill and use chemicals to, to crack the rock and pull it out, but, you know, there's, there's, there's ways to do it.
P and Z definitely participates, and they have the final authority over what-
Well, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, we've had to do it many times, we did a job on Route 1 in Greenwich, it was a Midas muffler shop right next to a Mercedes-Benz dealership, and we had to go down 15 feet in that, and we drilled and used chemicals to crack it, and it took a little longer, but it was quiet and safe.
And, uh, it's a question for Bruce, have you ever, you know, this question gets asked to every G C or C M, but have you ever been involved in any lawsuits, litigation, claims in the past five to 10 years?
Uh, yes, well, yes.
Yeah, I, yeah.
The town, the Board of Ed of Rye, New York, we built a beautiful project for them, they didn't pay us, so we had to sue them, and we went to arbitration, and we won.
Leans and whatever it is, have, you know, what about, what about-
No, he means the other way.
Oh, what other way?
No, I'm just saying-
In other words, somebody sued you.
Have you ever, have you ever, other than maybe Rye, New York?
No, but it's one, one of the subs, then we had 25 subs, it was a $20 million project, and one of the subs sued us, but he's a friend of ours, he said, well, I gotta do it, because I gotta get on the list with, with you guys to, to fight in court, but we never got to court, 'cause they settled with us, and they paid us all the money.
I think what he's asking, has anybody sued you for improper construction?
No.
Complaints, things like that?
Lawsuits, I'm just, you know, leans, is any, anybody put leans on prop, you know, or, you know, because of, you know, because of, or contractors put a lien on a property because they haven't been paid in full, or there's-
No, only a scenario like that where we didn't get paid.
A dispute or whatever it is, but, you know, I'm just, I'm, you know-
No, we're pretty good at that.
Well, everybody's, I know, people said that.
No, no, we are.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not down with that.
It's probably public record, honestly, you might look it up on Google, Google anything, probably.
And if we can get a copy of this?
I, I can give it to you tonight.
Yeah, I asked, I already asked it.
Somebody's computer tonight.
'Cause I haven't seen a new thing from you in a while.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, this is the new thing.
With Bernard's name and all that, so I think it'd be good to-
We can, we, we can do it tonight, absolutely.
That'd be good.
I can put it on, put it on-
And we'd like to get it up on the website for residents.
Yeah, let me make sure, yeah.
I think we should.
I suggested that about half an hour ago.
Yeah, but I'd like to get a hard copy, too, so at least we can, you know, maybe, you know, maybe-
Okay.
Can do that.
Sandy has another question.
I have one more question, and it relates to public presentations that you're willing to do prior to the referendum in terms of explaining the project, letting residents actually ask you questions, so are you prepared to do some of those sessions, and how many of them?
Yeah, uh, 100%, I mean, we're, we're at the stage now where, where, listen, I, I want, I wanna know their questions, too, and their, and their concerns, and, and try and address them the best I can, um, but yes, the answer is, you know, they'll have opportunity at, at the upcoming board meetings, um, meaning, you know, town, relative town boards, and I, I believe we're, you know, we would have to have a public meeting.
We have to schedule a special town meeting.
Where, similar to kinda what we did back in January, December, yeah, December, where, you know, we gathered in the, in the gym, and we fielded questions, I mean, it was two developers at that one.
It's important that everybody gets a question, an opportunity.
And, and also, as part of, you know, this, this whole thing, I believe we're gonna do some, some events on our own, as, as a team-
Okay.
To invite the public to come and, and ask questions and, and things like that, so, unrelated to the, to the town, you know, setting up a meeting, we, we plan on having some events on, on our own for, for public comment.
So I think the sooner that we could establish those and the dates, because I think otherwise, your presentations to the boards and commissions will get overwhelmed by people who are not even on that board or commission.
Gotcha.
And I think we wanna make sure that those groups have ample opportunity to ask their questions, um, and that the public then have, they can be there, but that there will be established public times for residents to come and be able to interact with you.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I fully intend to, to have those events, and also, obviously, the ones that the town runs.
Okay.
We'll have that, too.
All right, thank you.[1644.44] All right, thank you.
And just one more follow-up. You're going to have the architect, engineer work directly for you?
Yes.
Is, you have an architect and an engineer, or you pick local or-
Yeah, they're, they're on staff.
Okay. So, you have them, you have them on staff?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any homes around this area that you could share, you know, give us something that we can go look at?
Absolutely.
You know, and here's a representative of maybe what we are-
100%.
-planning to do and whatever.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, they're all, you know, what I would call lower Fairfield County, but within a 20-minute drive.
I'm just curious, like, if you have something-
Yeah, absolutely, 100%.
I don't know if that's something that's-
Depends on what time you leave, the 20 minutes. Yeah. Whatever. 20 minutes going that way in the middle of the day.
If, if, we, yeah, if we all go together, we'd have to, we can do a board meeting that way, but if you all want to go on your own, like we did with the streetlights, and it's up to you, whatever, whatever's your pleasure, or-
The answer to Dwight, we can give you a, a portfolio resume, basically, and you can, you can go see the college.
Okay. This side good?
Mm-hmm.
Joe? Okay, you got them all answered, right? Mika?
Can I just say one thing about the process?
And I talked, we talked to Dennis about this and to Brian, and I think Bruce, since the Board of Selectment approved Insight when Insight had another partner, it was done even before some of the new members are on the board, the Board of Selectment will now have to re-approve Insight and Bruce's company the way we did it with your other partner. So, that's what Beth was talking about on the vote, and that will happen whenever the board wants to take that vote.
Right, we've asked you guys to hold a couple of dates, depending on, you know, everyone's schedule, so, we're not, unless you want to vote tonight, but I'm assuming folks want to-
He wants to go see it.
Yeah, we have a few, I think everyone should absolutely take time to do our due diligence, as I said in the beginning, to get your questions, you know, make sure you feel comfortable with voting before you vote. Okay? So, I don't anticipate a vote tonight?
Yeah.
Just the marketing, what do you plan to market? Right after referendum?
Tomorrow. No, I'm just curious, I'm curious. We, we've been working with a, with a, not only an online marketer, but a marketing firm to set up kind of our, what we're looking to do, and the website and, and social media is obviously the online component, and, you know, these events that we plan to hold, Dwight, within the next week. I'll, I'll, I'll say that we'll have something finalized, or, you know.
No, I'm just curious, okay.
But, but yes, we are, we are currently working to, to put that schedule together.
Wait until they vote, though. You should wait until they vote on the new-
Oh, true, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, okay.
And then you're going to send, you're going to send a list of Bruce's workload?
Yep.
Send that along, that'd be great, that'd be great.
Anything else from any board? Okay, thank you so much.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, so Jerry, what's, what's different?
Do you want to talk in the executive session?
I don't know.
We're having an executive session.
Okay. You have what?
Do we have Dennis's card?
Do you have it?
Yes.
Jerry has it. Dennis, do you have a card? You give Jerry your-
I'll be back. You have a two-minute break?
Yep. We're going to take a two-minute break, so everyone can breathe and whatever else they have to do. Thank you. And that's what I meant, our crowd.
You want to skip the rest of the agenda?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I'll move to rearrange. Till next time, till next time.
She didn't see me. Okay. Item 10, you guys ready in the back there? Okay, thank you so much. Thumbs up. Item 10 on the agenda is the Assistant Administrative Officers' Report. Betsy? And we have an A LED lighting project. Thank you.
So, I wanted to give you all a heads up that I've been working on a project to convert the municipal buildings to LED, and I am this close to being able to present something to you. The project would be funded through an on-bill 0% interest loan through UI, and the energy savings from the conversion would help fund the project. There's also an energy incentive from the utility, so our cost would actually be the project cost minus the incentive, and that's what we would be paying off of on our electric bill.
The details of which you have on you?
Yes, so the, the way, this will work slightly different from the way we normally do projects. We'd, the first step would be that we'd have to award the contract to the vendor, and we would know the total project cost, but we wouldn't yet know the incentive. So, we, whatever the project cost is, the town would be paying less. So, first, we have to figure out which vendor we would be using, and once we have that information, I can send the information to UI, and they'll do all the calculations, because it's going to depend on the specific type of bulb that they're using, and they'll, they'll calculate all of that to figure out our incentive, and then the town's final cost, and then amortize that over the approximately three-year period of the bill. So, there's a chance that we would be paying the same on our electric bill, we could be paying a little less, we could be paying a smidge more, but we wouldn't really be paying anything in bulk out of pocket. It would be paid off over the course of the three-year loan.
Explain, explain the scope of the project.
Yes, okay. So, we'll be, we're, we're looking at Town Hall, some of which has already been converted at Town Hall, so it's, it's not a full conversion at Town Hall. The Public Works Building, the Firehouse, and the Center Building, the library's already been converted. So, those are, I'm sorry, and Beecher Road School. So, those are the buildings that we're looking at. So, it's not your house. So, it's, it's a pretty big project, and the other thing that we are weighing is whether or not we have town labor do the majority of the work, with the exception of locations where you need to use a lift, so parking lot lights, the gyms, the firehouse bay, or using the vendor to do the entire project.
So, this is interior annexed, you're correct?
Yes, yes. And so, it's, it's a little more of a complicated analysis. So, we'll be looking at the vendor costs versus the town labor cost, and also how much we could save over the life of the project, because the vendor would be able to get the project done much faster than the town would.
Saving time sooner.
Exactly, so there's, it, it's a little more complicated than most of the projects that we do. So, I'm hoping that I can bring that to you at the end of this month, at the, the special meeting, and if not, it would be in October. But I just wanted to give you all a heads up that this is, this is coming down the road. Couple quick other updates. There are several new businesses in town that you all might be aware of. Americana Dry Cleaning moved to Woodbridge from Westville. Chip in a Bottle is a new gelato chocolate and coffee shop.
Can you also mention where they are?
Yes, so Americana Dry Cleaning is in the location where Biltmore used to be on Amity Road. Chip in a Bottle is on Selden, and they, they're just kind of in the middle of getting ready to do their grand opening. He's open occasionally in the afternoons right now.
They were in Westville, right?
Yes, so both of those businesses moved to Woodbridge from Westville. Life Touch is a photography business, they do a lot of school photos.
I just, I just noticed that the, last week, the company I use, my kid was using for their photos is Life Touch.
Yes, yes, so they're in Woodbridge now, and they moved here from the valley. And another business is Holt Law, it's a new law firm, new to town, and they focus on mediated divorce. They're in the building in 88 Bradley, where the Children's Divorce Center used to be, so it's thematically very similar.
And, and where is Life Touch?
They're on Research Drive.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, so, a lot of activity. Other news, the transfer station scale is now operational, and from what I hear, things are going well. So, in a couple months, we'll put the scale on the agenda to discuss any issues, kinks, talk about how it's going, and assuming it's ready, you all can discuss whether or not you want to expand the use to residential use. Right now, the scale is only for haulers.
What's the price per ton, ton, for haulers?
Ninety?
Ninety?
Did we do ninety?
It's more than ninety.
Can't remember.
But less than a hundred.
Ninety, what, yours?
Ninety, what?
I thought we voted on ninety-ish, but I don't remember.
But ninety-ish.
Ninety-ish.
The dog park is very, 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 very close. They have all of their fundraising done for the necessary items, so the fence, the asphalt removal at the skating rink, and the funding that is needed still is for the niceties, like benches, shade trees, decorative bushes, that sort of thing. And they told me that they plan to start removing the asphalt from the skating rink soon, possibly later this month or early October. So, it will be operational this fall.
That's, we've got approval for it? Yeah, I was going to say that.
Yes, so that's been approved by the board, it did not need to go before TPZ.
It doesn't?
It doesn't.
Well, well, what was the, I'm sorry.
Rovol of the asphalt.
Rovol of the asphalt.
Skating park.
Yeah. The TPZ approved it?
It didn't need to go before then.
How about it was on what?
Same.
Didn't it, didn't need it? I think Terry, Terry reviewed it.
You, you had to review it, and you said, yeah.
Yes, we were, we talked to them several times, yes.
So, Bonnie just wanted us to say, if anyone's interested, there's still opportunities to give money toward that. So, I think, what is it, Woodbridge Dog Park?
Cooperative.
Cooperative. Google that if you choose to donate.
I don't think that's probably ever going to stop. Though it is the-
Could be, right. But we made it very clear when we gave them the go-ahead, that in order to establish it, build it, everything must be paid for by donations, no town money, so. So, once, I guess they'll come back to us prior to the fact, you know, once they're done, and have all the money raised, and tell us exactly what they're going to use it for. So, we'll see the final project, so we can sign off on it. We all feel comfortable.
And lastly, I just wanted you all to be aware that Fall of Palooza is happening in October. That's our month-long celebration of the town, organized by the Community Council. And this year, instead of putting out together a poster, we're doing a listing of all the events on the town's website. The poster has proved to be a bit of a headache in the past. It would be nearly final, and then an event would change, or be added, or subtracted, and so, just to keep things more simple and be a little more flexible with updating information that's just on the website. And there's a, a pretty nice list of events going on, I will read them all off to you.
I don't know if we have a lot of to, but an icon or something that's very specific to, it might help people just find it faster, or, you know, I don't know what, how it's going to be set up, I haven't seen it yet, but, you know what I mean, just, just- They have a link on the home, like Fall events or Fall of Palooza.
Yeah, let me think about how to do that, yeah.
You know, you can just put a link there. Something distinct.
Mm-hmm. That's a good idea, Mika, yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Betsy?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item 11 is Town Counsel's Report. Do you have any from Jerry?
Nothing, I've just started the executive session, so we're waiting.
Okay, great, okay.